Welcome all. We would like to thank you for being here this evening to participate in the Lakewood Planning Commission process. To join the City Council, to join the Planning Commission meeting for public comment by iPad, iPhone, or Android device on the Zoom app, enter webinar number, ID number 82639967782. By telephone, please call 720-707-2669, and enter webinar ID number 82639967782. Select the pound key. Participant ID is again the pound key. Press 9 to request to speak. You will then be prompted when to speak. Press star 6 to unmute. One of the primary functions of this commission is to receive information and comments through the public hearing process. All comments relevant to the cases before us this evening are important and will be considered in our decision. The members of this commission are all city residents and appointed by City Council. If you have documents for Planning Commission and staff, please provide hard copies to the secretary as soon as you are able. If you wish to speak this evening, please make sure you to sign in on one of the sign-in sheets. Each of you who plan to testify this evening must adhere to the following guidelines. Proper decorum must be maintained in council chambers. Clapping, booing, or audible conversations among the audience is not appropriate and will not be allowed. Please provide all testimony at the podium. Please begin the testimony by stating your full name, complete address with zip code for the record. You will note that there is a series of three lights adjacent to the microphone. There are green, yellow, and red. When you start to speak, the green light will appear. You will have three minutes to give whatever testimony you may feel is pertinent to the case and to the case being heard. As you approach the end of your time, the yellow light will appear to signal that you have 30 seconds remaining. At the end of the time, the red light will appear, and you should conclude your testimony at this point. Anyone else wishing to address the Planning Commission should pay attention to the testimony being given, and if your testimony is reaffirmation of what has been said, please keep it brief. Repetitive testimony does not further, does nothing to further the cause. If you wish to speak or have objections after all testimony has been given, you may request permission from me to readdress the commission, providing such a testimony or objections are relevant and pertinent to the case and do not simply restate testimony previously given. Could we please call the session to order?
Would you like me to call a roll?
Yes, please.
Commissioner Buckley? Commissioner Furman?
Here.
Commissioner Grablyunis?
Here.
Commissioner Kettner?
Here.
Commissioner O'Neil?
Here.
Commissioner Peters?
Here.
We have a quorum. May I begin?
Could you read the first agenda item, please?
Item 3, Approval of April 19th, 2023 PC Meeting Minutes.
So, we didn't receive the minutes in the email packet?
I don't know if your, or your mic is on?
Sorry.
And then the minutes were not given?
The minutes were not attached.
Okay, so it would be like to postpone until our next regular meeting?
Do we need a motion for that, or can we just postpone it?
We'll need a motion.
Okay, cheers.
I move that we postpone approval of the previous meeting's minutes until our next regular meeting.
Do we have a second?
Second.
And then, do we want to open up votes, or do you want me to call?
Could we just call? Could you just call the votes? Would that be all right?
Yeah, with the two online, that might be easier.
I can't see them either.
Yep, I'll begin. Commissioner Buckley?
Yes.
Commissioner Furman?
Yes.
Commissioner Grablyunis?
Yes.
Commissioner Kettner?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neil?
Yes.
Commissioner Peters?
Yes.
We'll postpone until our next regular meeting.
Thank you. Could you please read the next agenda item?
Item 4, RZ21-001, RZ22-0002, and AX-21-001, vote in action.
And Kayla, can we switch it to the presentation, please? Can I do that from here, maybe?
All right. Thank you, and good evening, Commissioners. My name is Bria Pafford, and I will be presenting for staff regarding three land use applications that we're asking you to consider tonight. The first is a proposed annexation into the city of Lakewood Municipal Boundary. It's case AX21001, and that is being tracked under case address 14700 West 7th Avenue. This is in addition to two rezoning cases, RZ211 and RZ222. The first one I reference is also tracked under case address 14700 West 7th Ave. The second one is being tracked under address 15000 West Colfax Avenue. The three applications that are being presented tonight are located along the Denver West Colorado Mills Boulevard, which may also be referred tonight by its original name of Indiana Street, so not to get confused. And it's this corridor located between 6th Avenue to the south and West Colfax Avenue to the north. And the vicinity map on this slide depicts land that is located within the existing Lakewood Municipal Boundary with the lighter gray color, and that property that's located within unincorporated Jefferson County in the darker gray without that lighter overlay. The applicant, Kent Stevenson, is President of Automotive Services Incorporated, is requesting annexation of two separate parcels of land that are approximately 15.5 acres in size and generally located north of West 6th Avenue and east of Denver West Colorado Mills Boulevard. The annexation request is part of a larger phased development proposal along the Denver West Colorado Mills Corridor that also includes the two separate zoning and rezoning applications. On the east side, the applicant is requesting an initial zoning and rezoning of approximately 37.6 acres, and that's for the proposed Denver West Automotive Campus. This will be the new home of Jaguar Land Rover, Lexus, and Chevy dealership facilities if these requests are approved. The applicant is proposing a planned development zoning with a base commercial regional zone district for the east side. On the west side of Colorado Mills, Denver West Boulevard, the applicant is requesting rezoning of 26.7 acres of land to planned development with a base commercial limited zone district. The west side rezoning is intended for future development once the Chevy and Lexus dealerships are moved to their new location on the east side. The annexation process to bring unincorporated land into municipal boundary is outlined in Title 31 of the Colorado Revised Statutes. The Lakewood City Charter also requires this body, the Planning Commission, to review and make recommendations to City Council on land use matters related to annexation and zoning, among other things. The initial zoning process for newly annexed land is defined by Article 2 of the Lakewood Zoning Ordinance. Pursuant to Colorado Revised Statutes, Lakewood City Council is required to take actually three separate actions on annexation to bring land into the municipal boundary. The annexation process starts when an annexation petition is filed with the city clerk, and then it's referred to the governing body to consider the petition and set the hearing date through the intent to annex resolution. After the required notification period, City Council must hold a public hearing on the annexation proposal, and then that's followed by a first reading for annexation ordinance as well as a second public hearing or a second meeting for the ordinance adoption. Now, Colorado Revised Statutes require that any land that's annexed into a municipality, it must be zoned within 90 days of that annexation. So that's why we're bringing these together. Now, the initial zoning and rezoning process that's required by the Lakewood Zoning Ordinance starts with a pre-planning application. It's followed by a neighborhood meeting, and then the applicant can come in and submit their formal application. The fourth step, which is where we're at tonight, is a public hearing and recommendation to City Council from this body, and then it will be followed by a first reading of ordinance as well as initial zoning public hearing and ordinance consideration by City Council. Now, there's a total of five public meetings that are required with annexation. The first two meetings are held by City Council, where they must adopt first the intent to annex resolution. That sets the public hearing date, and then followed by that public hearing, where at the end of that hearing, they're required to adopt a resolution findings of fact, and those two things must happen for any annexation to proceed before you guys today. Following today's meeting and your recommendation to City Council, again, this will go back to City, back to City Council for a first reading of all ordinances. That includes annexation and zoning, and then they'll have a final public hearing towards the end of August, where they'll really consider all of their requests that are before them. There's two applications that aren't considered by the Planning Commission. That includes vesting requests by the developer as well as the right-of-way vacation. So there's a couple other pieces we won't talk about tonight, but that will be part of that final meeting with City Council. The annexation proposal is evaluated based on the requirements of the Colorado Revised Statutes, guidance from the City of Lakewood Comprehensive Plan, as well as the Lakewood Three Mile Plan. The Municipal Annexation Act of 1965 regulates the eligibility of a property for annexation, and it sets for specific criteria that needs to be used in evaluating and approving proposed annexation. To be eligible for annexation, the annexation boundary must satisfy the 1.6 contingency requirement, so attached to the Lakewood Municipal Boundary, must be a community interest within an urbanized area, and capable of being integrated into the municipality. Colorado Revised Statutes or the Municipal Act also sets specific limitations on land to be annexed. First, land cannot be divided into separate tracts without consent of the property owner through the annexation process. Annexation cannot result in the detachment from or the attachment to any school district. Annexation cannot proceed if another municipality has already commenced annexation proceedings on that request. The annexation cannot extend the municipal boundary by more than three miles in any direction. When and where streets are being annexed, the entire width of the street must be included in the annexed area. And then finally, reasonable access shall not be denied to unincorporated land that's adjacent to a right-of-way or street that's annexed into the municipality. So they should, they still are allowed access to and from the public street regardless of the jurisdiction. Annexation is a discretionary action on part of the city, and the city's comprehensive plan doesn't really provide a whole lot of specific guidance regarding annexation specifically near the Denver West Growth Area, but it does refer to the City of Lakewood Urban Growth Boundary map for locations where future growth and annexation may occur, and so that's the map we see on the slide there. The proposed 15.5 acre annexation is within the Lakewood Growth Boundary that's depicted, and just for some clarification, the blue line is the municipal boundary, the darker gray shade is the urban growth boundary, and then everything else in white would be outside of that urban growth boundary. And we can see right here, that's the proposed annexation there. Any proposed annexation also cannot extend the city's municipal boundary by more than three miles in any one direction. The Lakewood Three Mile Plan is adopted by the city to satisfy the requirements of Colorado Revised Statutes. The proposed annexation will not extend the municipal boundary past the three-mile annexable area depicted in this slide. And so if you kind of look at this pinkish-red bubble, that's essentially a three-mile distance or buffer from the City of Lakewood Boundary. And again, we can see the annexation area right here, well within that three miles. Shifting gears to discuss the two rezoning proposals, this slide depicts the land that's included within both the east and west side rezoning proposals. There are five existing planned developments labeled on this side, planned development zone districts, in the vicinity of the proposed annexation and rezoning areas. Existing land within the municipal boundary on the east side of Denver West Colorado Mills Boulevard between 7th and 6th Avenue is covered by the Stevenson Denver West Center ODP Modification Number 1, and that ODP was adopted in, back in 2000. On the west side of Denver West Colorado Mills Boulevard, the existing dealerships and vacant land between West 7th Avenue and Colfax Avenue are covered by the Stevenson Denver West Center Annexation Edition Number 1 ODP, which was adopted in 1996, and the Stevenson Denver West Center ODP, which was again in that 2000 timeframe. And each of these ODPs includes a base zone district of mixed-use employment suburban. When we look at unincorporated Jefferson County zoning, the zoning for the adjacent areas is primarily low-density residential. There's a few planned developments and a few commercial zone properties scattered adjacent to the site and within the area. So the applicant is proposing two separate planned development zone districts that will continue to implement the long-term vision for the Stevenson Denver West Center development. Through the proposed official development plans, the new PD zone districts define the development review and approval process, which is consistent with the well-established review process for new development and redevelopment throughout Denver West. On the east side, the applicant is proposing the Stevenson Denver West Center Automotive Campus ODP with a base regional, commercial regional zone district, and then on the west side, the applicant is proposing the Stevenson's Denver West Center ODP Number 5, and that'll have a base commercial limited zone district. So a little bit different on the base zoning for both of these ODPs. For anyone not familiar with a planned development zone district, it is a unique zoning designation that permits planning and development of substantial parcels of land that are suitable in location and character for the, for the uses proposed and intended to be developed as unified and integrated project. All planned development zone districts include one of the base zone districts that's established in Article 3 of the Lakewood Zoning Ordinance, and all uses in the base zone district must be allowed in the PD. However, new land uses that are not in that base zone district can be added to the PD. With respect to dimensional and design standards in general, the standards that are applicable to the base zone districts will apply, however, the PD does provide an avenue where some of those standards can be modified or adjusted specific to the developments that are proposed. The primary long-range planning document for guiding land use decisions is the Lakewood 2025 Moving Forward Together Comprehensive Plan. This plan includes a vision, guiding principles, goals, action steps, as well as growth area maps, which, which we utilize a lot when we're looking at initial zoning and rezoning applications. The Denver West Growth Area is one of seven growth areas identified within the comprehensive plan. The west side rezoning site is located within, within the growth area, and it's under the mixed-use commercial land use designation. The east side initial zoning and rezoning sites are directly adjacent to the growth area, but it is outside of the limits of the land uses designations that are depicted, so we don't have a whole lot of input from the comp plan on that. Both sides are consistent with the growth area goals, given the proximity of both sites to the West 6th Avenue Freeway and West Colfax Avenue in Denver West Colorado Mills Boulevard, which are both arterial streets. The proposed zoning and commercial land uses are appropriate and promote the implementation of the comprehensive plan. Focusing on the east side proposal, the Stevenson Denver West Center Automotive Campus ODP that will, is proposing a base zone district of commercial regional. The intent of the commercial regional zone district is to provide for regional commercial development along major street corridors and new highways. This district is intended to accommodate the highest level of motor vehicle activity. This use comparison chart shows the uses based on the existing planned development with that underlying ME Zone District. The uses listed at the bottom of the first column are the additional uses that aren't allowed in the MES book but are allowed under the existing planned development. The land uses listed in the second column are those that are permitted in the commercial regional zone district, and the highlighted uses under the proposed zoning in red are those that are new, so they don't exist under the current zoning. So just to kind of give you a heads up about what would potentially be added. This chart reflects the existing and proposed dimensional and development standards, and key changes from the proposed rezoning include an increase by 10 feet to the allowed building height, reduced setbacks established with the existing PD, and that's primarily just to be consistent with the, the base CR Zone District setbacks, and then the minimum open space requirement will maintain, will stay the same. requirement will stay the same. This slide here depicts the proposed conceptual land use plan, and the ODP is proposing to establish three planning areas. Planning Area 1 is the largest of the three planning areas, and that is where redevelopment for the new automotive campus will occur, and that's the planning area shaded in red. Planning Area 2 will serve as the buffer between the automotive campus and the adjacent residential neighborhood, and it will accommodate stormwater drainage facilities including water quality and site detention. Planning Area 3 in green there is the only site located north of West 6th Avenue as part of the east side proposal, and is contiguous to the existing Toyota dealership along the north and west side property boundaries of that planning area. The applicant has not identified a specific development proposal for this area, so you know, use is allowed in the ODP would potentially be what would be allowed here as well. The CLUP conceptual land use plan also depicts locations where sidewalk improvements are required and property lines adjacent to those existing residential uses where the landscape transition buffers will apply to future development. Moving over to the west side now, the applicant is proposing or requesting approval of the Stevenson Denver West Center ODP Number Five, and that has a base commercial limited zone district. That's our newest zone district that the planning commission just reviewed and recommended approval for a couple months ago. The intent of the CL Zone District is to provide a mix of light commercial land uses along major street corridors, accommodating a balance of motor vehicle and pedestrian-related activity. Similar to the east side, this use comparison chart shows the uses based on the existing planned development zoning, along with the base MES listed, or allowed at the top, and then the additional uses allowed by the PD at the bottom. The second column are the retail and neighborhood-serving light commercial uses adopted in the commercial limited zone district, and then the highlighted uses or new permitted uses under the proposed zoning that were not necessarily permitted under the existing zoning. And then this chart again reflects the existing and proposed dimensional standards. Key changes here will include a decrease from the current PD in the allowed building height for Planning Area 2. Again, reduced setbacks pursuant to the prior planned development, and again, that's just for consistency with the setbacks in the base commercial limited zone district. And then again, open space is staying the same as what is currently required. Here's the conceptual land use plan for the west side, and north is facing, I guess, to our right there for some context. And this slide shows the ODP establishing two planning areas that reflect building height that we just discussed. So Planning Area 1 is proposed for the 60-foot building height. Planning Area 2, it drops down to the 45 feet. Planning cases that require public hearing must follow the procedural requirements defined in the zoning ordinance. Notice requirements were satisfied by sending notices, mail notification to property owners and tenants located within 500 feet of the project boundaries. Mail notifications were also sent to four neighborhood or business organizations that are registered with the City of Lakewood located within one-half mile of the project. The notification for the meeting tonight was also published in the Denver Post Your Hub section. It was posted on the bulletin boards here at the Civic Center, and then notification signs were posted on both properties. A review referral for each application was provided to the applicable service providers, utility districts, and outside agencies. As part of this review process, city staff did not receive any objection from these service districts, utility providers regarding either the annexation or rezoning proposals. The zoning ordinance has specific review criteria that is required for a rezoning approval, and our summary as follows. First, the applicant must demonstrate that the proposal is in conformance with the intent of the zoning ordinance. Second, must demonstrate compatibility with surrounding land uses or those land uses that are envisioned in the comprehensive plan. And then finally, one of the three following things must be met. First, that it's promoting implementation of the comprehensive plan, or that there is a sufficient material change in the neighborhoods such that rezoning is just in the public interest. And then finally, not the case for either one of these proposals, but if it's found that the initial zoning was done in error, then that would be a requirement for rezoning. The compatibility criteria is satisfied, I'm sorry. The proposed rezoning supports the purpose and intent of the zoning ordinance for the following reasons listed here. First, it implements the comprehensive plan through reinvestment of underutilized commercial properties. It includes orderly development through the public process, accommodates the effective integration of a mixture of uses and redevelopment with surrounding uses, and it really just ensures economic vitality of Lakewood by supporting existing businesses, expanding the employment base, and contributing to Lakewood's tax revenue. The compatibility criteria is satisfied because the proposed rezoning is consistent with the surrounding land development pattern where commercial uses have existed adjacent to single-family residential uses for several decades now. The proposed rezoning is also compatible with the land use envisioned in the comprehensive plan. The west side ODP is located within the Denver West Growth Area and is consistent with the land use designation mixed-use commercial. The east side ODP is directly adjacent to that growth area and really is a logical location to expand commercial development specifically because of the proximity where the site is bounded by the freeway on the south, 6th Avenue, and an arterial street on the west, and then 7th Avenue is a collector, which is on the north side of the property. The proposed rezoning promotes the implementation of the comprehensive plan because the subject properties are within or directly adjacent to the Denver West Growth Area, and the rezoning will support the vision expressed in the comprehensive plan by supporting growth of existing Lakewood businesses, promoting commercial and mixed-use investment and reinvestment in designated growth areas, supporting business retention and effort, and strengthening employment opportunities, and ensuring coordination of services with utility and service providers early on in the development process. Finally, the location of the face development supports the proposed commercial development pattern along our major street corridors and freeways, which is pretty consistent throughout the City of Lakewood. Based on the information provided in the staff report and presented tonight, staff recommends that the planning commission adopt the findings of fact in order as presented in the annexation and rezoning staff report, and recommend that city council approve Annexation Case AX21-1 and Rezoning Cases RZ21-1 and RZ22-2. This concludes staff's presentation tonight. Before I take a seat, I would like to quickly introduce the applicant, Kent Stevenson. He's here tonight. He's joined by Greg and Brian Stevenson. And the applicant's team has prepared two short presentations, you know, based on each rezoning proposal or each side, and we can invite them up to give their presentations. And then following that, we can open up for public comment, and staff will be available for any questions, and then the planning commission can start their discussion. All right?
Great, thank you.
So it looks like Greg will be stepping up first, and I'll let him introduce anybody else on his team.
Let me get you pulled up here.
Start, and we're going to start with this side. And when you get done with this one, I can come and get this one out.
Yes, oh, yes.
Click.
Click on the right side.
Yeah.
You can start right there.
You want to start there?
Sure.
Okay. All right.
Now, how'd you go back?
Oh, you can also scroll with this.
Okay.
That's easier to.
Be close.
Okay.
Thank you, Greg Stevenson. Address 1546 Cole Boulevard, Lakewood, Colorado 80401. Thank you for setting some time aside. It's good to see some of you. It's been quite a while. What I'd like to do today, if you don't mind, I've got my brother Kent, who is in the automotive business, and then my son Brian has been here to help on a number of, some items we've been working on over the years. Real quickly, I'm president of Denver West Partners, and I've been with Denver West since, for almost 40, 50 years now. It's been, let's see here, it's been 48 years so far. And we are a master plan community, and we, what I'm showing you here right now is the property that's, we're talking, one of the properties we're talking about tonight, and that's the, what I'll call the automotive campus, which at the bottom of the slide is 6th Avenue, and then just to the north is the Stevenson Toyota dealership, and then at the very top is the Colorado Mills Shopping Center. Okay, let's have this work. There we go. Denver West is a 550-acre planned community development. We've been, we started, like I said, in the very early 70s, and to the north of the property is of the development, I should say, it's a mile by a mile and a half. And the north is North Table Mountain, and then, which you can't see, but then immediately at the top of the slide is a residential area. And then on both sides of I-70 is the Denver West Office Park. And then as you move across I-70 between Colfax and 7th Avenue is a retail district, which is Denver West Village, and then the Colorado Mills Shopping Center. The property that, looking at, so you can see how the property that we're talking about tonight fits within our master plan geographically, and what the next slide will show hopefully is all the annexations that I've done over the years into the City of Lakewood. This, I think, is, they say is our 22nd, 23rd. So we're very deliberate in our planning, we're very deliberate in our development and when we develop, and we're very deliberate on bringing property into the City of Lakewood. The reason for that is historically, we were unincorporated Jefferson County, very independent. It wasn't until I served on the Open Space Advisory Committee, and I was on the committee for about 23 years and chair for 17 of it, was I never realized how important sales tax were to the cities. Being unincorporated, you just didn't think about that. So when we started looking at billing the original shopping center, I did, I was approached by Golden, I was approached by City of Lakewood on perhaps incorporating. And we grew up in Golden, and our first business was in downtown Golden on 13th and Ford Street, then we eventually moved out to the Denver West area now. And the thought was in my mind was Golden would be fine. They've got that niche, they've got the Coors Brewery, and, you know, they've got that main street, they've got that character as a community. Whereas I really felt that if we did not annex into the City of Lakewood, that Westland was having a very, very, very difficult time at the time, and Villitalia was also. And the idea was that it would be nice to be outside the city and not have to worry about a 3% sales tax, but what would happen ultimately is that West Colfax would become East Colfax, and that would ultimately come down into Denver West, and it would affect us and our property values, as well as the property values of our neighbors. So we annexed in the City of Lakewood. A little story was that at the time, Mike Rock was the city manager, and I was worried about going into the city, to be quite candid, so I said, "Mike, I need to be able to de-annex within, I think it was like the first five or six years if things just don't work out for any reason." And Mike was great. He said, "That's terrific." He said, "You'll enjoy the City of Lakewood and the people there." And after about three years, I called Mike, said, "Mike, we're in, we're not, get rid of that option, we're in for you all." So we've grown over time, and we've added properties, you can see, and our focus has been, Office Park started first, we added a hotel, we started some residential, we started the retail, and we're now at a point where, let me move to the next slide, what you're seeing now is again, at the top of this slide is the Colorado Mills in the hatched area, and then the, just to the left of the slide is where Chevrolet and the Lexus dealerships currently exist. The property that we first annexed in, I think it was back in 1994, was shown here in green. Over the years, we've acquired the property in blue, and this is the automotive campus that we're proposing. And so what we would like to do now is to bring in both, all the properties in as one major planned development under one jurisdiction. We're kind of filling in the gaps, if you will, and the idea would be that we would bring it in, zone it, annex it for automotive campus, and then relocate the current Chevy dealership, the current Lexus dealership, and then there's a new Jaguar dealership that's right now located in West Colfax in Lakewood, that would then move over here along with Range Rover or Land Rover. And so we'd have a three automotive campus that'd be built all at one time, and there's a lot of work that Kent has done in developing it, because he's been in the automobile business for quite some time. Last year in the automobile business was my high school senior, and I decided I wanted to go work for some other people just to see what it's like to work outside of family. And then in college, I worked for a first bank all through college. And so that was a great experience for me, and then I got in the land development business with Chuck, my father. So with that, I think I'd like to turn this over to Kent, and then I'd be back and talk to you a little bit about that west side, if you don't mind. Thank you.
You want to move things, you're supposed to first. I'm supposed to do that.
Hi, my name is Kent Stevenson. I'm at 1726 Cole Boulevard, Suite 300, Lakewood at Denver West. Thank you for your time this evening. As Greg alluded to, we're proposing to do the automotive campus and have Toyota Highline Boutique Store with Jaguar and Land Rover, and then we'd have a brand-new Lexus store. That one was one of the original stores built in the country back in 1989. So it's served well, but it's an old building. And then the Toyota store, or the Chevy store, was the oldest Toyota store, built in '85 by my father. So both those stores have been around a long time. The evolution with dealerships now is the, all of the new technology that's out from an efficiency standpoint, lighting, and all the things that go in in the interior, because as you all know, the EV world's coming. And so we just finished construction of a Porsche store over on Broadway, and you have to basically bring in two different power grids to the dealership for charging and those sorts of things that's on, and just general operations of what a dealership would be. Part of the reason to move, I'm not sure what slide's next, but, is Toyota West, trying to go across Indiana, as any of you have done that, I mean, you come off the exit ramp of 6th Avenue, they're cooking, I mean, they're going fast. And so we have employees and people, customers going back and forth. Part of the motivation behind this is, is that one, those buildings are very old, and that site can be redeveloped down the road. But we then can have all of our folks, employees, customers, and stuff on our own automotive campus. The other portion of what this will be is we can have, can control an inner road, kind of where the current frontage road is, that will be acquired, and that serves as an interior road back and forth between the stores. We don't have to go out on 7th, we don't have to go out towards Indiana or Colorado Mills nearly as much as what would happen if they're just still going back and forth. So certainly, everything will be built to conform with all the standards, all of the green space, all of the requirement. The new lighting technology is far better, so you don't have all these clarion lights that you can get a suntan under that you have in the old days, and it's very good economically from a cost standpoint. So you're very motivated these days to bring the state-of-the-art facilities, because it'll last for the next 30, 40 years before the manufacturers change their mind again and want you to do something different, in which they seem to do that every five or six years. But this gives an opportunity to be able to do that. We've looked at the traffic studies, part of what we have, we've heard from some of the neighbors who have called us from time to time, because some of our people are going out from the Toyota store, back in the neighborhoods, are taking a test drive. All this traffic will be conveyed out to Colorado Mills Boulevard and not back into the neighborhoods. I mean, people don't take test drives historically in that direction. They want to get out and either get on 6th Avenue to see what we'll do, they'll jump on 6th real quick and then go up by 70 to Morrison, or they'll go buzz down Colfax to kind of get what that will do from whatever reason, whether it's power or convenience and those sorts of things. So we're very aware of our neighbors, we're very, we want to do this. When we did the Toyota West store, we had a lovely lady behind there, and I sat down at a kitchen table because of one of the lights. She would wake up, and it was shining like this one right here, and so we figured a different lighting fixture, and we had panels made, so it wasn't shining like that. But it's one of the things that, you know, we've been doing for so long that you want to be neighborly, you want to talk about it. And granted, no one likes certain developments. This isn't a row of apartments with 300 residents and God knows how much traffic. This isn't a row of apartments with 300 residents and God knows how much traffic. The other thing that has changed in our industry is COVID. We're not open like we used to be at 9:30 or 10:00 or midnight, we close at 6:30 or 7:00. And most people now have conformed to where that's off of that, and once we vacate the property, there's not much activity that goes on. The other part with the three stores together is, we can handle all of our transport trucks off-site, they're not on Seventh, they're not in Indiana. It'll all be done internally, it'll all be, have areas, which gives us a lot more efficiency when they do drop off in the middle of the night, or whenever, early in the mornings, that kind of thing. We're aware of, we don't have outside paging, we've not had that for years, because everybody carries what I call their crackberries, which is one of these. So you're able to talk and call, and that sort of thing, so that helps facilitate that sort of thing. There really is no need for loudspeakers and those sorts of things out there. We have cameras, we have security, and those sorts of things, that can be generated if we need to. I can, this is a kind of a rendering, I know it's, I don't think, if it's at this stage or not, but I thought I'd give you kind of a look of it. And you can see, I don't have a cursor, but along where Sixth Avenue is there, you can see open driveways, and then behind the house, what I call it, as you'll see, or in the front of the two stores, is that inner road sort of area that can go back and forth. So when a transport brings two or three Jags, it'll have Toyotas on it, it'll have, so you're not running all these independent trucks dumping off one or two cars, that they've, they've changed that whole scenario, which is good for us as well. We have a large buffer area to Eldridge, retention, we move around the curling center, because that's still in Jefferson County. And then we have, the driveway you see here matches up to the driveway of the Total West store. So it's not as if you have to turn, go down somewhere, you can go right across the street if someone wants to compare items, or traffic, and those sorts of things. We no longer have to worry about getting hot on Indiana, and have to worry about that, which is a God blessing. And one thing that we, I can assure you is, that when these are all built, and they'll be built simultaneously, is the minute they're occupied, we will not have vacant dealerships sitting there for eight or 10 years, that happened to be with Colorado Mills, became a huge eye store. Not knowing what will be developed on that site, but it's, for me, I just don't like clutter, I don't like those sorts of things. And so we'll make appropriate moves to tear those down, once we have the opportunity to do so. And that way, have a clean site to be developed, three or four years, whatever the number is, down the road. So that's basically, I think, everything I've got, and certainly open for questions that you all might have. Yes? I'm sorry, Greg.
Just move that up. Thank you. Thank you all. So to just take a few minutes to discuss what's happening on the, on the west side of Indiana in more detail. It's, it's currently commercially zoned within the city, and what we're doing now is, we're just adjusting some of the primary uses, or, and the largest one is what we're, we're doing, is we want to remove the automotive use. The reason for that is, what we'd like, we'd like to be assured that the automotive uses do go away when the three new dealerships are built, and the, the biggest reason for that, well, actually, there's several of them, but one of them is, we don't want to cannibalize West Colfax. And the location we have here is ideal for other kinds of development, and I know that there'd be automotive dealers who'd like to come down here also, and we're thinking that, just, just as, one of the reasons we annexed into the city of Lakewood is to help preserve West Colfax and, and the like, this is another step on that, that we, we would like to do all we can to keep other businesses vacating West Colfax and coming down here, unless there's some sort of agreement with the city, and they, they understand that it's in the greater good of the community. So that's, that's the biggest thing that we're doing here, is we want to go ahead and remove the automotive use here, on the west side. And this slide here is just to show you the relationship between the two parcels that we're talking about tonight. And, and then one last picture, and that is, this again shows you how Denver West fits within the master plan of Denver West, and how we are incorporating what's going on in the southern, southern portion of our, our property. What, what this also allows us to do is to finally have a gateway into the city of Lakewood off of Sixth Avenue, which we've waited a long time for that. When we, over the years when we annexed, we brought in I-70, which was the only property, I think, in Lakewood, that is along the interstate, and that's, that was the I-70 gateway into the city. What this does here is on Sixth and Indiana, a new gateway there, and then it also enhances the gateway that's at Colfax and I-70, also where the current dealerships are. And with that, I think we're done with our presentation, and we'll be glad to answer questions as you all desire. Right? Thank you.
Thank you. So now, this time, we'll open it for public comment. And... So just a reminder that all folks that want to speak here have three minutes to do so, and we will go ahead and begin now. I'm going to start with Diane Duffy, who is pooling her time for Daniel's Wellchester Neighborhood Organization.
Does the overhead light? Please, I can change it. One minute. Diane Duffy, I'm the president of Daniel's Wellchester Neighborhood, which is the neighborhood surrounding the project that the judgment...
Could you point the mic towards you a little bit more?
Oh. Okay, is that better? We're the neighborhood surrounding this, and as you can imagine, this is very different for us. We have a fairly rural-feeling neighborhood. Now, I'm a big proponent of working on this ahead of coming to you, and working with the developers ahead of time. Not that I don't trust the city to have all the regulations in place, but we know what we want, so we work with them ahead of time. It's not fair to bring our complaints to you and just drop them in your lap tonight. So I'd just like to talk about some of the issues that we have identified, and what has been resolved and what hasn't. So I actually attended all the meetings as president of the neighborhood. I then, realizing I wasn't reaching everyone, I literally went house to house and knocked on doors, so that I could really understand the issues, because there are houses that directly face this project. There's houses to the north and houses to the east that are literally across the street. So this is quite a shock for them. So I've also been working, once I understood what the concerns were, I've been working with the, the Denver West Architectural Control Committee. And they, along with the city, will govern this project as it develops, how it develops, and how it operates going forward. And this is, this is all important to our neighborhood. So some of the issues that we've identified, noise, as Mr. Stevenson mentioned, I have been assured that the loudspeakers that we're used to hearing on some dealerships, the paging systems are not going to be at this project. Everyone has their cell phones, so my concerns there pretty much alleviated. Everyone has a cell phone, even my kids. The lights there, again, I understand the city has regulations on this. We want to assure that these are downcast lights, and I'm very relieved to hear that the dealership is not going to be open until 10, 11 o'clock, and all the lights are going to be on. I would assume there will be some for security purposes, and as long as they are downcast and not too bright, I feel certain that they will work together with this. The buffer area, now, this was a huge concern, because there's, and I'm going to walk away from the microphone and show you. The houses here were going to be directly across the street from this, but with this buffer area, that's going to be all open space, trees, we've talked about a berm, we've talked about a wall. The, the neighbors there are not going to be staring at the dealership. It's going to be a little more aesthetically pleasing, so we can breathe a little easier, aren't we breathing easier a little bit?
And time has expired. I don't know what you would like to do, Chair O'Neil.
10 minutes?
Pooling time.
Pooling, 10 minutes, sorry.
10 minutes, sorry about that.
I'm a third of the way done, so I think I'm on time.
No worries.
The use of Seventh Avenue. Now, the car transports, very relieved to hear that they will be inside, and there won't be car transports on Seventh Avenue. I'm assuming that the city will require some enhancements to Seventh Avenue. That's not a very wide street, there's no curb, there's no gutters, there's no sidewalks. This is going to have a lot more traffic. With the frontage road gone, I looked at the traffic report, that's going to put 400 more cars on Seventh Avenue on a given day. So that street has got to be, got to be improved. The no-left turn out of the project, the signs will help. They won't work completely, and I think we all understand that not everyone obeys the traffic signs, but they will definitely help get the traffic, the dealership traffic out to Indiana, and that's great. The number of entrances and exits, I can see that there's only going to be a couple, that's encouraging, too. I would like, and I had talked to the Architectural Committee, about the traffic that does go down Seventh Avenue. And if you notice, there's a curve. Seventh Avenue curves here, and comes around and goes up to Eighth Avenue. This goes into our neighborhood, and I would really like to have some designation that that's a neighborhood, maybe some planners with a light, or a sign on either side of that saying, Daniel's Wellchester Neighborhood, or saying something, so that the traffic realizes they're entering a neighborhood, it's not a thoroughfare. We don't want people speeding through our neighborhood. But this does add a lot of traffic to Seventh Avenue, and to Eighth Avenue, I'm afraid. It's going to add some to that, too. We will, we will, in the future, may look to the city to do some traffic calming on Eighth Avenue, that's something that remains to be seen. But some of the, the residents are very concerned about losing the frontage road. I don't know the answer to that, and in working with the developer, we haven't come to a So the frontage road down here came from over, whoops, from this area and came out, and went up to Seventh Avenue, leaving, leaving all of this, this easy access out, and there is a church over here. If there was any way for them to add, maybe not leave the frontage road, but add some access on the south side of the project that would take traffic around, it would be very much appreciated. I understand with the grading, it would be very difficult. But that doesn't mean we can't ask. So those are our issues, that's what we've resolved, and that's what we've, we're going to leave in your hands. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Rita Ucoiz, Ucoiz.
Thank you for taking the time to listen to my testimony tonight. My name is Cody Rex of 5093 Pine Ridge Drive in Golden, and this is my grandma of 765 Isabel Street in Golden. And I just want to take some time to give some public comment here, and address some concerns that we have. So first of all, to begin, we are located directly next to the West annexation being proposed on Isabel Street and Seventh. And should this zoning resolution receive approval, our property will be facing into basically a 45-foot concrete wall of that tall automotive commercial structure and car and/or retaining buffer. So our home looks directly into that west portion. And we're concerned because of the lack of residential character and compatibility with the surrounding residential area, specifically along Seventh Street. And I want to give you a picture of Seventh and Isabel there. It's a very quiet community, there's a lot of kids and families in that area, and along Seventh, there's, it's a really high-speed area. You see a lot of people speeding through Seventh, there's already traffic reduction in place, there's multiple speed bumps. So we really feel that, you know, this, this definitely isn't in the character of the surrounding community, you know, this, this is the last of the residential area over there. And we're very concerned with, you know, that character and increased traffic congestion. Even though transport might be internal, we feel that, you know, parts and inventory will still be run along that road, especially as it connects over Indiana. And we're very concerned with, you know, the noise and pollution, the light pollution, even though LED and there's more effective methods there. You know, this is a, a large area that has a lot of overspill from that light, and those lights are on all the time in the middle of the night, they definitely spill over. And we just feel that there's going to be a lot, a loss of privacy there. There's already Stevenson employees that have been parking along Isabel for a number of years. I mean, you know, the whole area is owned by the Stephensons and, and their businesses. And we really feel that, you know, there's just going to be increased crime, lack of privacy, and a real loss of community cohesion there. And so we, we strongly urge that the commissioners reevaluate this, and we are not in favor of this proposal, and I think it's really going to cause harm to the community there. So thank you for the time this evening.
Thank you. Next, Kathleen Clark.
Hi, I'm Kathleen Clark, I'm 13605 West Seventh Avenue. I live directly down the street from it, which makes me concerned about the traffic. I've lived in this area for 20 years, and have really enjoyed this area, because it was a mix of rural, it had, you know, it was a good place to raise a family. My front tree was hit, probably 10 years ago, 15 years, no, more than 20 years ago, by speeding traffic. It moved about five feet, it's an ash tree, it was supposed to die, and it didn't. It was hit by traffic coming down Seventh Avenue from the direction that would be the Stevenson Automotive Plaza. I have grandkids, there are kids on the street, the traffic is going to be a huge nightmare. When you have all the traffic coming down Seventh Avenue with 400 extra cars a day, that is a huge security risk for our neighborhood. that is a huge security risk for our neighborhood. And I really wish you would reconsider this whole endeavor because it destroys our community. It destroys our property values. And we are important, too. And I kind of wonder, are the people who are putting all these development places here, they don't live in our neighborhood? They live somewhere else. Because when you hear their addresses, they were their business addresses. They weren't their personal addresses. And I think that's a huge consideration. We have a good community. We'd like to keep it that way and not have it destroyed by people who do not live in the area and who do not have to face the problems every day. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you. Laura Hack.
My name is Laura Hack, and I live at 13620 West 7th Avenue. I'm very concerned about the traffic aspect. At one point, when I was online, I think it was a year and a half ago, there was a, there was talk of closing off Eldridge or even the dogleg of 7th. I'd like to know about that a little bit more. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I show Jane Alvarado. No, Jane. Louis and Nadia Lopez. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see you. So Jane Alvarado.
So it's on the green line? Okay. So we bought the property that we're at, at 13995 West 7th Avenue. We're right at Eldridge and 7th. We're right there on the corner. And the curling iron or curling thing is already there, okay? And that's increased traffic down 7th Avenue. But being there, the reason we moved there was because it was such a beautiful area and residential. And all the beautiful houses were taken out where this thing is going to go in, all the beautiful rock houses, one by one, everything was taken out. It's really changing the feel and the thought of having them move in there. I know that, you know, they have their interests. I feel like we need to be respected, too. And it ruins our privacy. All the lights will be coming right into our house. And I know they say that they'll turn them off at 6:00, but we know car lots. We've all driven by them. We know what it looks like. I just, I just think it's such a shame that we would even be considering this. We walk our dogs in the neighborhood. People are out with their kids. People are in wheelchairs in the area and everything. I just can't imagine what this is going to do to the neighborhood. So it's really disappointing. This is my sister Janet Hartley, and she's lived with me there, too, for 20 years. And did you have anything you'd like to say?
Can I have three minutes?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I just, I'm kind of not understanding why they got an hour and we get three minutes. But I will write, I will, I'm very good at writing. So I'm Janet Hartley. I live at 13995 West 7th Avenue, right on the corner of 7th and Eldridge. I've already seen with the increase in traffic on that street. Now, you have to understand, those streets that intersect are not even two-lane. If there are two cars going down that lane, you have to, like, pull over into the side lane. It, to me, this is just, it's really, really so sad that someone in their dream and, you know, increasing their whatever, their wealth or whatever, it's, it's just like ridiculous. No one thinks about someone who's lived there for 20 years. You know, what about us? That's all.
Thank you. I'll, I'll complete the list, and then there'll be an opportunity to speak when the list is complete. Louis and Nadia Lopez. Louis and Nadia Lopez. Jessica Kendall. That's it? Hmm, I don't know. Um, sorry?
Is there anyone online?
I don't know yet. Hang on. Keddie Linder? No, that's a no. Okay. So at this time, it looks like on the sign-in sheet, there are no others that wish to speak. Is that correct?
Are you in college? Is anybody else who wants to speak?
Yeah, yep. So at this time, if there's anyone else in the area that would like to speak, please.
All right, hello. My name is Robert Licata. I live at 605 Alkire Street, which is, if you're looking at the property they're trying to use, it is on the opposite side of the thru road going back on Alkire. So 7th goes back, takes, take a right, and you go back on the thru street, all the way back around. Stevenson owns a dealership on 8th Avenue. They own a dealership, that's a Lexus dealership across the street. They own the Toyota dealership across the street. They're talking about moving out of those places to move into this place, correct? Yeah. My opinion is, if they're not going to use the places that they currently aren't using, which if you look at them, there's X amount of cars in the Toyota dealership, X amount of cars in the Jaguar dealership, X amount of cars in the Toyota dealership that aren't being used. They literally have six cars in the front of some of those dealerships. They're not being used. This thing that they're implanting or trying to put together, they want to move all of that stuff to one site, but then they're going to leave empty sites. I don't know if you've gone across the street of Colorado Mills. There's six current empty restaurants. There's going to be six more dealerships currently empty. As opposed to using the things that they currently own, they want to move and cause a different area to be completely, completely used. That area has gone from raid training over the course of this, for the city, to demolishing houses, to then, now you want car dealerships to go into there. It has been a sight for sore eyes over the course of the course of the last two years. Now, what is happening now is that they want to move these unused dealerships to this spot to then be unused in a different area that then will then cause unused, literally, commercial areas that they say in three to four years, they will redevelop. And they keep using this word, which I thought was very funny of you guys, to use the word enhance. They use enhance multiple different times during his discussion. But nothing about this is enhancing anything. If anything, it's detracting and it's taking away from something that is an area that people live in. And what they're doing is they're trying to cause, they're trying to move dealerships that they are not, that they're losing money in and that they're not using right now, and trying to condense it into one area. Because then, for them, they could try to sell these places and reuse these places that they're losing money in currently. And if you look at their dealership and their parking lots of these dealerships, they're literally empty at this point. And that, that alone makes, this makes no logistical sense in any way. So if you guys would reconsider this on the, on the stance that they already own all this other stuff and that they don't need to move and that they can just rebuild their own stuff, that would be the consideration that I would consider. Everything else can be talked about at a different time. But realistically, they should just redevelop the things that they currently use. Because if you look across the street, everything is empty. And that's not helping build anything. This is just moving. And that's all it is.
Thank you. At this time, can we? Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, please.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Clayton. I'm at 624 Eldridge Street, right across the street from where the green space is going to be. So we would be looking at, I don't know, the wall or whatever. I'm also a customer of Stevenson Toyota. I pay them every single month for my car. And I am concerned with, like, the sidewalks aren't really, there aren't sidewalks in the neighborhood. Like, you have to walk, like, on the street a lot of times. And like, it's true, the street is very narrow. And to the point, yes, like, the, over the years, the lots in the Stevenson area, like, the Lexus, I don't know what's going on with the lights there. It's like Exorcist stuff over there because like, the lights kind of blink on and off like crazy all the time. The lights are on 24/7. Like, they're super bright. And I, you know, I've gotten home, like, pretty late, and they're always bright, like, 24 hours a day. And I'm concerned with the traffic. Like, I know that there's like a traffic counter there, counting the number of cars. And I'm like, oh, my gosh. I'm just anticipating the amount of traffic that's going to be increasing. Not to mention, they're going to be building another 75-unit property right there, too. We're like, I don't know if it's going to be apartments or condominiums or whatever. But that's, that's another thing to consider, right? That's more traffic. And I've got a little boy that I'm concerned about. Like, he, you know, very concerned about the frontage road because people always race over there. But I am concerned about the traffic. Obviously, what is this green space going to look like? What's, another thing is, like, this isn't a new idea because I know that this has been planned for a very, very long time. And it had to do with, like, I don't know, the water drainage system or something like that in the field. And I think that that was part of it, which is kind of getting figured out. Like, and how is that, is that figured out? Like, the water drainage system? Where's the water going to drain to? All that stuff. Like, is all that figured out? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak at this time? Are there any phone calls or online comments?
So there were two comments that were submitted earlier today, and I see that only one Commissioner has viewed them. How would you like for me to show you the comments? Do you want me to read them off? There's one that's an attachment with four pictures. I could go into Liquid Speaks here and then cast it?
That sounds good. Yeah. Thank you.
Sorry, I'm trying to maximize it. This is from Sherry Agard. Would you prefer if I read it out loud?
Sure. Thank you. Yes, thank you.
The 6th Avenue frontage road should remain open to provide an alternate safety route for emergency services if 7th Avenue is not accessible. This happened on June 14, 2022, when one of the abandoned houses within the Stevenson proposed development area south of 7th Avenue caught fire. And I'm showing a picture of a house that is on fire. The large contingent from West Metro Emergency Services was quickly able to extinguish the fire, but 7th Avenue was blocked in both directions for more than an hour. An ambulance is blocking access. Once 7th Avenue was blocked at the west end, additional emergency vehicles were able to use the frontage road to get to the east end. During this time, the public was also able to use the frontage road to get around the 7th Avenue closure. There's a fire engine blocking a road. The Stevenson Development could also benefit from having established roads on both the north and south sides, especially for evacuation and EMS access to the campus in the event of an emergency. The frontage road should also be retained for other local traffic to the Mormon Church and residential areas to the east, which extends the Alkire Street neighborhood. Thank you. The second one is from Michael Golspig. I can read this out loud as well. Would you prefer that?
Yes, please.
I do not object to the rezoning, but would like to bring up some concerns as a resident living to the east of the proposed Stevenson Automotive Campus, case AX-21-001. Building the Automotive Campus will inevitably increase traffic in the area, particularly, particularly on the west 7th Ave, which is a main entrance to the residential area. Infrastructure of that road will need to be improved to meet the significant change as it was not originally built to accommodate heavy traffic. In particular, west 7th Ave will require better turn lanes and sidewalks, which currently does not exist for most of the street and where they do are not contiguous. This is also a busy road for cycles, bicycles, both recreational and commuting, as well as pedestrian traffic. As such, sidewalks and bicycles, bicycle lanes on west 7th Ave should be incorporated into the development plans. Further, increased commercial traffic will significantly impact the residents of the area, which did not exist when individuals purchased their homes. Improved infrastructure should be completed by Stevenson Automotive and/or the City of Lakewood in an effort to minimize this impact. An example of recent impact is when large events take place on the Curling Center. At these times, cars park along west 7th Ave, which effectively turns the two-lane road into a single-lane road. This creates a dangerous situation for pedestrians and drivers and is only bringing in traffic on a much smaller scale than the Automotive Campus will once fully developed. Proper planning will need to be completed to avoid situations like this when the Automotive Complex is built. Also worth noting is that the residential area to the east of the proposed Automotive Campus has more and more young families with children moving in. Therefore, it is recommended that the vehicle test drives not be conducted in the residential area. Higher vehicle traffic with clients focused on the test vehi- Higher vehicle traffic with clients focused on the test vehicular features instead of the roads and unfamiliar vehicle operations induce higher safety concerns for pedestrians and children playing in the residential area. City of Lakewood and Jefferson County should investigate an improved roadway layout on Denver West Colorado Mills Boulevard, northbound traffic lanes from the underpass of west Sixth Ave freeway to the west Seventh Ave. The off-ramp from east travel traffic from west Sixth Ave, yep, to north travel on Denver West Colorado Mills Boulevard has a turn lane that splits into two lanes. It is difficult and sometimes dangerous to cross these two lanes for a right-hand turn on west Seventh Ave when traveling northbound on Denver West Colorado Mills Boulevard. Increased traffic to these proposed commercial areas will make the situation worse. A single merge lane and a dedicated right-turn lane on west Seventh Ave are suggested. Also, a dedicated right-turn and merge lane from west Seventh Ave on northbound Denver West Colorado Mills Boulevard. Care to minimize construction debris on the roadway such as dirt and rocks should also be taken. Residents of the area should not have to worry about rocks being kicked up from vehicles causing personal vehicle damage such as cracked windshields. In conclusion, development plans need to consider the residents of this area to minimize impacts of the automotive center that were not present when they moved in. The roads and residential structure of the community were not built to accommodate such a heavy flow of traffic that will inevitably follow the addition of such a large commercial entity. Increased traffic of the commercial space will be felt by the residents in perpetuity, unless taken into consideration and addressed through intentional planning and action. Thank you. Those are the two comments that were on Liquid Speaks.
Thank you for reading those for us, Ms. Redd. So at this time, I think we'll...
No.
So at this time, we'll close public comment? And then begin discussion? Ms. Redd, is there any way to make this screen show the Zoom folks? I can't see if someone's raising their hand on there, unless you can. Bill and Rhonda?
I'm able to see it on my end. I'm trying to think of how we did... Okay, just give me one second. Apologies, just trying to figure out gallery view.
We're just showing the non-video participants.
That's what I do.
There you go. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, and somebody has their hand up already?
Yes.
Oh, he's first.
Okay, Commissioner Furman.
Oh, I partially raised my hand just so that we had one to see.
Thank you.
Trying to figure this out. A couple of things. I just wanted to comment on initially, my apologies for not being able to be there in person. I think this is an important conversation. I want to say I am grateful to the Stephenson's for their presentation and for all the public for coming forward with their comments and concerns. Going into the presentation, you know, my biggest concern was trying to get a sense of, and I think we discussed this when the topic of the new zone came up, which is, you know, what are the situations in which we want to create a zone? That one of the main things that restricts is housing. So obviously, there's, I'm certain there are some people who are very happy about not having housing in there. So I'm not saying it's necessarily the right or wrong thing, but it is interesting to note that we are looking at a zone district that would restrict to no housing. So I don't know if there's any comment regarding that. The other thing I found most telling is that obviously, traffic is the biggest concern. And so I appreciated the comments regarding the controls Stevenson would put in to try and encourage test drives and traffic to essentially be going to and from Indiana or what was Indiana and to be left only out on the seventh. And knowing that this is the main street that's serving that community is already a bit of a street some people take as a back route from Union. So I guess it would be a lot of these conversations about what should and shouldn't be done. Obviously, we'll be in the sort of final planning of this. So for me, a lot of what I'm focusing on is the rezoning and the annexation. Obviously, the annexation by itself makes a lot of sense. Because of where the properties fall, it seems entirely reasonable. I understand the intent of the rezone. I do think all possible things that could be done to mitigate the traffic concerns that are obviously very important in the neighborhood should be done, whatever means necessary to really drive that traffic away from the neighborhood is obviously critical. So mostly, I had comments that, like I said, the only one that really is a question is if there was any more comments regarding the reason for the ECL zoning in the west that would not allow housing.
And then for the commissioners who are on Zoom, or anyone who will speak, can I ask that you turn your camera on? If possible.
It's not allowing me. Actually, I tried to turn on a couple of times. It says that the host hasn't stopped.
I'll work to figure that out.
Thank you.
Do we have additional commissioner comment or question?
Yes, I do. I've been pushing to...
Yeah, I don't have any. I can't see any. Okay, so Commissioner Buckley?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, I was pushing the respect to request to speak button. Not sure if you saw that. I see it's lighting up now. So, thank you, Chair O'Neill. I have a lot of questions tonight, but I'll begin first with just some of the questions that residents have raised about the roadway network, the streets. This is a question for staff. I heard it said a few times that there's a traffic study that established that there's going to be about 400 extra cars per day on Seventh Avenue. Could someone who has some knowledge of the traffic study elaborate? What stretch of Seventh Avenue exactly are we talking about? Does the study go to distinguish the part of Seventh Avenue between Colorado Mills, Denver West Boulevard, and the 90-degree curve where it goes north to become Eighth Avenue? And the part of Seventh Avenue that is beyond that curve inside the neighborhood? I think it's important to understand the distinction in existing volumes and the increase in volumes on either side of that, if we have that information.
Good evening. My name is Tony Bishop. I'm with the City of Liquid Transportation Engineering Division. And the city has reviewed and approved two traffic studies, one for each side of Indiana, based upon, excuse me, the preliminary information that we have for the estimated trips. What I would like is for the applicant to further discuss the specifics of their findings based upon the trip generations, based upon their proposed uses.
All right, I would be happy with that if... Yeah, Greg or Kent Stevenson, if you would like to come up and discuss the traffic study to address my questions. Thank you.
My name is Fred Lance. I'm a traffic engineer that prepared the traffic study. And I'm looking up the numbers that you were referencing. I think what you were asking me is, how much traffic is going to be on Seventh Avenue west of the Eighth Avenue connector? And how much is east of there?
Yes, correct. Yeah, so several things, I guess, I'd like to know. How much traffic is there today? I heard several residents say that it's going to increase by about 400 cars per day in the future with these developments. So exactly what part of the street is that increase at? And just the overall scale, is it increasing from, you know, 100 a day to 500 a day? Or is it increasing from, you know, 5,000 a day to 5,500 a day? I think it's...
Right. We work mostly in peak hour trips because that's the critical periods for traffic. And the number of trips that are going to go toward Eighth Avenue in the peak hour, we're looking at roughly 25 in an hour additional trips. And the trips going straight east on Seventh Avenue, we're only looking at one or two. And the reason that is, is that, you know, the intersection of Seventh Avenue and Eighth, the Eighth Avenue connector discourages traffic going onto Seventh Avenue, continuing east. And so that's why the volumes are fairly low there that we're adding to it. And existing traffic in the peak hours are in the 60 to 80-hour range on, let's say, on the Eighth Avenue connector. So it's that section there. So we're adding 25 to it. And the existing traffic on Seventh Avenue is in the 25 range, and we're adding one or two.
Okay.
So it's really very low.
Yeah, and is Seventh Avenue from Colorado Mills, Denver West Boulevard, to the east around the curves where it becomes Eighth Avenue, is that currently classified as a collector street in terms of functional classification?
That's correct. It's a collector.
Yeah, so we have a collector street with about 60 to 80 cars per hour in the most highly trafficked hour of the day. And that'll increase to something like 80 to 105. We're adding 25 cars an hour on that segment.
Correct, yes.
Yeah, okay, which is definitely well within the capacity of a residential street. I guess just simple math, 25 cars extra per hour. That's about, call it one car every two minutes extra.
Correct.
Right. So yeah, certainly that alleviates a little bit of my concern. That does not seem like an overwhelming crush of traffic. I will ask, I bet I know what your answer will be, but this study, I'm sure, is anticipating the extra traffic, not just going to the car dealership that's being constructed, but that is being rerouted from the frontage road onto Seventh Avenue because of the fact that the frontage road will no longer exist, correct?
That's correct. The frontage road carries about 400 a day, something like that. But the peak hours, maximum peak hours, is about 20 that comes off the frontage road. So that is part of it that would be moved up to Seventh Avenue.
I see. So in the busiest hour of traffic a day, those 20 extra cars would come up, I guess, Eldridge Street to Seventh Avenue and then have to turn at that intersection of Seventh, Seventh and Eighth and continue west. And that would be the detour route instead?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay. And what you say is about 400 cars a day on the Sixth Avenue frontage road?
About, yes.
Okay. I'm not sure if you know the answer to this next question or if it will be someone else on your team. Can you go into some detail to describe the infrastructure improvements on Seventh Avenue along the frontage of the Stevenson's new car dealership property? We heard residents talk about the need for turn lanes, sidewalks. The commenter on Liquid Speaks even mentioned bike lanes, which I'll say is a good idea. I agree with that. I've tried to ride my bike over in this area of town before. And this stretch of Seventh is one of the few east-west connectable roads that's kind of comfortable to ride a bike on. But the stretch between like the Daniels-Wilchester neighborhood and Colorado Mills Boulevard is a pretty scary link and gap in the bike network too. So yeah, definitely interested in all the improvements that could be made along that stretch of Seventh.
I can't answer your question, only because we're in zoning now and we haven't done a development plan on there. But we do anticipate turn lanes at the access points. We do anticipate sidewalks. And if the city requires a bike lane, it would be a bike lane. So all of that stuff will be answered in the development plan.
Okay. So understanding we're in a preliminary state, we're talking about zoning and not a site plan. Can someone from the state, from the city, I'm sorry, Ms. Bishop, Mr. Rice, someone speak to the kinds of improvements specifically that the city might be able to require?
Sure. My name is Ben Mamen. I'm an engineer with the City of Liquid Public Works Department. And yeah, we would look at requiring improvements specifically for the, so for the roadway, we would expect to see the portion west of the curve to be widened to match our collector standard road, which in some cases includes bike lanes in there. One of the potential issues we run into with bike lanes is that the connection, we want to make sure if we add bike lanes in there that they actually connect to part of the system. So we want to make sure that works for the whole portion of that. We will require sidewalk off, you know, detached sidewalk along the south side there across their frontage that will help to kind of alleviate and provide some safety for folks that are using that space in there. For the Seventh Avenue piece east of the curve and for Eldridge, those are both intended to be local streets. So we will have some widening in there to match what our local street standard is as well. So the intent is to have those improvements occur with this development that would meet, bring those roads up to our current standards.
Okay, thank you. And can you describe for those who may not know, which includes me, like what the collector street standard and the local street standard for the City of Lakewood is? Like, how wide of a road is that? What lane configurations does it have, so forth?
Sure. So for the local street standard is 28 feet flow line to flow line section. So from curb to curb, 28 feet wide. So it allows for parking on both sides and two through lanes through there. If there's parking on both sides, sometimes those streets can feel a little tight, but that also slows traffic down through those sections. For the collectors, a little bit trickier to answer with, you know, you had asked about turn lanes and some other things. Those can affect how the width of that street works. But generally, what we would be looking for, we typically get a... for, we typically get a 36-foot curb-to-curb section, which allows for either a center turn lane or bike lanes. If both are required, then it would end up being wider in there. And those will kind of, those decisions will be determined once we get to the final site plan and we know precisely where the access locations end up, how much, once we see the full, the actual development plan for this site and the potential for the turn lane lengths at Denver West Colorado Mills Boulevard and how that extends back through there. So generally, we would look for a 36-foot section, but it likely will look a little bit different and probably somewhat wider in through this stretch.
Okay. Another thing, I guess I've seen in developments in the past is a lot of times the city's hands are tied in terms of requiring street improvements along the frontage of the property that's actually under development. And we kind of have a hole here on the east side of the new automotive campus where the Curling Center currently is. So that Curling Center is not part of the redevelopment. It won't even be part of the City of Lakewood. Will the improvements be continuous across that property in terms of, like, the sidewalk's not going to stop on either side of the Curling Center and you have to walk through the dirt for, you know, 200 feet or whatever?
Yeah, so you are correct. Our hands are a bit tied for what's happening across the frontage of the Curling Center property because it's not included with this development. There is existing curb, gutter, and sidewalk along that frontage.
Okay.
It's attached sidewalk. Our intention would be to match in with detached sidewalk on either sides for those and how that works. It gets a little bit tricky coming into the 7th, 7th intersection there.
Sure.
But yeah, the intent would be to match into the existing sidewalk with the detached sidewalk.
Okay, but yeah, at least a sidewalk could be continuous then in front of that property. And of course, like, the lane geometry has to be continuous across the gap regardless of whether it's technically the Stevenson's frontage or not. We have to connect the lanes if there's, you know, a turn lane there or whatever. It's all going to work.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, no, thank you. That's helpful for understanding. I have my final question about traffic. I am somewhat reassured that the volumes of traffic that we're talking about being generated by the site, being diverted off the 6th Avenue frontage road, seem to be fairly low. Nevertheless, you know, any increase is certainly going to be felt by the neighbors, and understandably, it's not something they desire and want to happen. What can be done as part of any redevelopment on this site in terms of further traffic calming to the east within the neighborhood? I'm talking about away from the frontage of this project. I know it's also complicated because some of that area is outside Lakewood's corporate limits, but can anything be done for further traffic calming to address some of these concerns outside the immediate area just in front of the new car dealership?
This, excuse me, the City of Lakewood does have programs for their streets. We have explanations online about our traffic calming, but we do not have the jurisdiction for those sections within the county. I do believe the county has some programs, although I'm not sure how their qualifications are for those traffic calming devices. We have real specific ones that we have adopted by council for speed humps, traffic calming items of that nature. And I'm not sure of what the county's criteria is.
Okay. Has there been any coordination with the county about that issue to date?
I have not. I do not know of that, sir.
Okay, thank you. And I guess I'd have thought of one more question related to all the traffic issues, and this one will be for Greg and Kent Stevenson directly. I'm just, I'd appreciate it very much if you could come up and give your reaction to these residents' concerns about the traffic in the neighborhoods and what you can do to reassure us that you will work with these residents and be a good neighbor.
I appreciate your questions, and I appreciate the question. And certainly, I do appreciate the comments from the neighbors. As I said, we've been developing for a very long time in this neighborhood. Indian is widened because we widened it. 8th Avenue was widened because we widened it. When we first envisioned building the shopping center, for instance, and the rest of the development, we widened the turn lanes onto 6th Avenue. That dealt with Justin County, with Golden, and with Lakewood. And we worked with, we actually worked with the neighbors on the turn from 7th into 8th. The idea behind that was to prevent or to discourage people going straight into 7th. So that was something that we worked on years ago, over 25 years ago, to have that happen. We also, at that time, actually went and supported the citizens' desires to come up with traffic calming ideas that they had all along 8th Avenue. And then what we did is we presented it to the fire department, and we said, which of these work and which of them don't? So the traffic calming that was put in years ago was approved by West Metro. We have no problem doing that again at all. It doesn't trouble us. I mean, traffic is important to us. We want people to be able to get in, get out. We don't like cars idling. And so we're not some outside group from out of town. We grew up in Golden, Colorado. We've owned this property starting in the '60s. As I mentioned, I'll be approaching 50 years and developing it. We do it the right time for the right reasons, so have no problem with that whatsoever. Be happy to sit down with the neighbors and give them plans. You tell us, what traffic calming devices do you want where? And we'll go back again, it's been a quarter of a century, but maybe it's time to do it again, now that this development is occurring, and see what West Metro will allow. That'd be perfectly fine with us.
Yeah, no, thank you, sir. I really appreciate you giving that answer. I mean, it's reassuring, and I know that your long history in this area, to me, that gives you trust and credibility that, you know, you mean what you're saying and that you're a man of your word, and that is very valuable. But we are also just at the rezoning stage, and I know our hands are somewhat tied with what we can really force you to do. And I'm also sure that some of the residents may, you know, appreciate the strongest possible commitment to help with traffic calming. You just made a verbal one.
It's on the record.
Yeah, it's on the record. So thank you very much for that. Mr. Rice, is there anything further we can do in terms of, like, the power of the Planning Commission to put that as a condition of the rezoning or anything like that?
You can't condition zoning.
Sure.
Staff, as we get informal applications, will remind Mr. Stevenson of his comment, and then staff will work with the applicant to follow up on that.
All right, well, I appreciate the staff's work in that regard, as always. And again, Mr. Stevenson, thank you very much for your comment.
And I wanted to extend it further. Be happy to go to the county and also talk to them about that also.
Right, on the streets.
So we know the people at the county. You hang around a lot, you know a lot of people, but be happy to do it because it's important to us. Sidewalk connections are important to us. We've got 15 miles worth of trails that we've done through Denver West, running from South Apple Mountain to 6th Avenue. So pedestrian access to us is very, very important. We want people to. But I do want to stress, I do understand how change is difficult. We've been through that many times, and all I can do is try to assure everybody we're going to do the best we can to minimize whatever our development, the changes that occur. We have owned the property for a long time. It is along US Highway 6, and the Chevy side is along US Highway, or is along US Highway 40, and is along Interstate 70. And there are some areas where commercial developments should occur. And there happens to be areas where perhaps multifamily should not occur. So we're trying to thread this needle, and there's, yeah, so I'll leave it at that, and I'd be happy for any other questions you might have. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate your thoughtfulness. I have many other questions on my list this evening, but that concludes my questions about the traffic issues. So I will let some of my fellow commissioners ask questions, and maybe they'll think of some of the things that are also on my list, and I don't have to talk so much. Thank you.
Hi, Mr. Stevenson. I just wanted to redirect back to Commissioner Furman asked a question at the beginning regarding the decision to eliminate housing from zoning on all of the properties, but on the west side specifically that isn't being redeveloped in the immediate. Could you speak to that?
Well, yes, I think of the reason, you're talking about where the current dealerships are?
Yes.
Okay. The reason we asked for that to be eliminated because we did not feel having multifamily, multifamily project on that site was not a use that we could embrace. We think there are other places better to do multifamily development. We've done 1,100 units away from the neighborhoods throughout Denver West over the last quarter century or more. Again, with something that fronts up to Interstate 70, US Highway 40, and easy access to 6th, again, that, to me, economically, is a commercial corridor. And there's a couple of comments about some empty restaurants and things like that. Well, there's an empty theater. And again, the reason theaters empty is because we've been waiting for the longest time and negotiating for years with Whole Foods to build a brand-new Whole Foods at that site. And just this last year, we've gotten control of the site with our partner, Simon, and the theater would be torn down here, probably, starting, hopefully, in the next 30 days. It's an extensive project. Those theaters on the Denver West Village side, the I-70 side, were the first stadium-seated theaters in Colorado. So everything's poured-in-place concrete. It's very, it's quite a bunker. It'll take quite a while to have it removed. We've gone through three architects and seven planning plans to get a development that we liked. And again, Simons, Mills and Simon have been great partners. But sometimes the best thing you can do is leave something empty. We did not want a gas station where Mimi's was, didn't want that. There's another proposal on one of the other billings that we did not think was compatible with the area. You could slap a fast food operation on one of them, and we said, what about the rest of the land? We don't have an answer for that. So fine, you're going to leave it empty. Mimi's will be torn down and will be in a new restaurant that I cannot disclose. On the border is sitting there. They actually are, they extended their lease, but we've got control of that back. So again, we've been doing this a very long time, and I hate to repeat this, but we are very patient, and we don't want to put something in there that's going to fail, and we don't want to put something in there that, well, we'll use three quarters of the property, but we're not sure what we're going to do with the other quarter. I tell you what, the other quarter will be a weed patch, and it sits there forever. So there's method in our madness. Granted, you know what? We have some, we're not full of the cars that we've had five years ago. But you know, we're not going through, coming out of COVID, we're not going through the chip, the chip issues that we have, the electronic chips and all that. Selling cars, it's moving forward, that's fine. And the other part is, is the current lighting we have is old, old, old lighting. That's been jerry-rigged over the years. That's why we've been very anxious to go ahead and get the new dealerships built, get the new technology in there, get the new energy savings in there. And so there's, we are thoughtful in when we develop, how we develop, and the like. And sometimes the best deal you make is the one you walk away from, and that's why you'll see some of the restaurants out of there. I don't want a gas station there. We don't. There's another place for it, but it's not there, and plus, they can't figure out what to do with the rest of the land. I'm not going to put another fast food area in an area where we already have, we have traffic issues. I'm not going to do that. We've talked to the city about maybe tearing some billings down and moving that, the new billing to other locations on the site to make it work better because, you know, it's 25 years old. So yeah, that's how we operate, and that's all I can tell you as far as that goes.
Any other commissioner questions?
Yeah, I want to know.
I have a lot. I have one follow-up on traffic, though. Do you have any traffic?
Okay, yeah, I had some follow-ups on some things that Mr. Stevenson just said. I'll let you go first, Commissioner Kender.
Are you sure? Okay.
All right, yeah, if you insist. Just, you mentioned gas stations.
Sure.
I believe there was a slide in the staff presentation that Ms. Pafford did at the beginning that stated that motor vehicle fueling stations would be permitted use on
The west side.
On the west side. Is that a permitted use by right, or is it still require a special use permit as fueling stations currently require in every other zone district in our city?
I think it's permitted use by right, but still the law and the city standards would be.
Yeah, I would certainly feel a lot better if, rather than a use by right, fueling stations were a special use permit, just for consistency with literally every other zone district that allows them, that exists in Lakewood.
Yeah, so on sheet four of the Stevenson's Denver West Center ODP, Section 3A, if you go to 2C, motor vehicle service fueling stations are permitted use within the property subject to the limitations and standards. And then it references those sections of the zoning ordinance that provide the separation requirements and things.
So to where? It's a special use permit requiring a hearing at the Planning Commission for a fuel station?
No special use permit, but still needs to meet the standards, based on what's proposed here. It would be a permitted use by right, still needs to meet the standards that would be allowed.
Okay.
What I'd like to address, gas stations, I was going back in my mind thinking, over the years, I've removed six gas stations from that area. There was one, Walt's Conoco on Colfax and Indiana. There was one across the street, the Pister Station. There were, there's a Conoco Station with a restaurant up above. There was another one in front of a store that used to sell construction fly fishing equipment on Indiana where the Chevy dealership is now. There's a station across from where our warehouse building was on Indiana towards 6th, and I think there was actually a gas station as part of the, when the warehouse was a 7-Eleven and a sound studio. So we took out six of them over the years, and we figured, you know, we'll put one in, maybe two. But this is one of the sites that seemed to make sense, and it would be at least looking at putting one in. So again, scarcity, I think, is better in many respects for survivability. That's why when we did the movie theater, I gave, you know, I had artists the right to have the theater over at Mills if we ever built one there. And the idea behind it was so that we didn't have two competing theaters that both were doing poorly. And they liked it because I think they helped protect their market. But anyway, with the changing in what's happened with theaters, they don't, no longer need the one at Denver West Village, and so we're going to repurposed, tear it all down and put in a new Whole Foods. And we have people lined up to take the Whole Foods and take Bed Bath &amp; Beyond, so.
Thank you. Commissioner Kender?
Go ahead.
I was going to follow up on traffic, so I don't know that my question is for you, because I was wondering about the frontage road, according to this plan, would be closed off?
It'd be eliminated.
Right, eliminated.
Yes.
Frontage roads are typically, and this might be my staff question, is it currently right-of-way?
Yes.
Has it been vacated yet?
So the West 6th Avenue frontage road that you guys are discussing is currently part of C DOT right-of-way. And so it has to go through a process with C DOT for that right-of-way to be converted into property that's no longer right-of-way?
Also is where they plow. It's the only road they plow in the area. So all the way through as a pro road is the only road that gets plowed. So if you notice, the whole entire neighborhood rolls around via that plow that goes through the front row of us is the only one they can get.
Thank you, thank you. Public comment's closed. I appreciate your comment, but thank you.
Do you know anything? I was thinking it was, I did not know that it was C DOT. The reason I'm kind of bringing it up is that I'm sure the people who are in this room would be the ones kind of interested in the process for that. Is anybody familiar with what that process?
It's going through the process now on decommissioning the road. And the road itself is in the city of Lakewood, currently in the city of Lakewood now.
So it is in the city of Lakewood?
Yes, it is.
So would it have to go through the city of Lakewood right-of-way vacation process? But no, because it's owned by C DOT through the C DOT. And does the C DOT process include a public comment period? Does anybody know? I'm sorry, because it's C DOT's process, I don't know.
I'm not personally familiar with that.
I can't say, I don't know.
We don't have Carolyn, do we?
No. And I apologize. The C DOT devolution that we're discussing, it's being handled or housed under Public Works, and some of the Public Works staff is dealing with that. I don't actually have an update or know about their C DOT's process for that. That is certainly something we can look into, though, for the hearing on this on July 24th in front of council, but I wouldn't have any answers this evening.
So my other comment on question was actually for that hearing. I think this is more I think this is more for staff. I don't know if it would be possible. I think it would be helpful both for the public and perhaps commissioners and counselors to have copies of the traffic study and the drainage report. Drainage came up. There was reference to a drainage report, but it wasn't included. And I feel badly for having Mr. Stevenson stand up here when.
That's fine.
My questions are.
Regarding the right-of-way in C DOT, it may be worth noting that there is a piece of that that city council will be involved in. It's not that frontage road piece, but, so there will be a process that comes before city council that is somewhat involved and it will require an IGA between C DOT and Lakewood for another piece of that. And so that is something that will come before our city council.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And the, so no, it hasn't been vacated yet. And it came up from somebody, some idea of closing off Eldridge. I'm wondering if somebody could address that I.
There's.
That's a city question, correct?
I think so. I think, yeah, I think all of my questions were more city staff than for Mr. Stevenson.
At this time, there has been no discussion of closing down Eldridge. It will be, it will be no longer right-of-way in Jefferson County through the annexation. It will be annexed into Lakewood and Lakewood would then have to control it.
And one last thing relative to the streets. The reason that house was under, was under fire is because when we buy properties and part of the demolition is we turn that over to public safety and we turn it over to firefighters. The Coleman Building, which Denver West, we turn that over to just about every police force in the metropolitan area to do whatever they want to do, the canine dogs, everything else. And generally what we then is, certainly the houses we've bought and listed before, we've turned that over and let the fire departments go ahead and have a controlled burn. So that was a controlled burn to exercise what they needed for practice. So I just wanted to let you know. The SWAT, we've also, the SWAT team likes to use our vacant buildings that we're going to tear down. So just wanted to make that clear.
Thank you. That was all I had on traffic.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Yes, thank you. So it seems like there's been a lot of great communication between the community and the developer to date, understanding that this is a rezoning. I think those conversations are really important. As been mentioned previously, the commission's hand is tied a bit in terms of holding the developer accountable for specifics. So I was hoping staff could potentially explain what the next steps would look like in terms of making sure the community's concerns are being addressed and other opportunities for the community to have public comment once the design is finalized.
Bria, I'll answer, I'll start, I'll start answering that. So thank you for your question, Commissioner Furman. Lauren Stanek with the city attorney's office, or sorry, Commissioner Gravely, I apologize. Lauren Stanek with the city attorney's office. So we have a couple of opportunities to ensure that the neighbors' concerns are addressed. One of these, and it's going to, so there's actually three places where we can address these concerns. So first, to deal with some of the public improvements that we've discussed in terms of widening the roads, including, you know, gutters, curbs, appropriate drainage, potentially bike lanes if that's warranted, or any traffic calming mechanisms, those will be included in a public improvement agreement that will be planning, public works and the developer. The second mechanism to ensure the neighbors' concerns are addressed, we are able to modify the official development plan for some of these concerns. So I know that the Stevenson group has already brought to our attention that they would like to include some assurances in that to suggest, like, having their transport vehicles not used Seventh Avenue and things along that, those lines. So those are, would be, basically the official development plan would be modified to ensure that was addressed. The last mechanism we have is there is going to be an annexation zoning development investing agreement that the city is drafting. In there, we can include additional concerns. So for instance, this evening, we talked about the lack of a paging system, you know, not having some sort of loud system on site. That's something we can include in the, in this agreement, basically that this will not be permitted on the site. I don't know enough to speak, you know, intelligently about lighting systems or, you know, the strength of them or the new lighting systems, but that's something that we can also put in this agreement. Again, I don't know the proper terminology for what that would be, but that's something we could include. So while we've been sitting here, both Ms. Pafford and myself, and I'm sure other city staff members have been keeping a running list and trying to figure out, does this go into a public improvement agreement? Does this go into modifying the official development plan? Or does this go into this development agreement that we're working on? I know also that the Stevenson group has come up with many of these same suggestions already and brought those to our attention prior to today. So they're interested in, in including these as well. So those are going to be additional mechanisms. I don't know if Ms. Pafford has anything else to add.
And I think just the, maybe the second part of that is, what would the next or next few opportunities be for the public to see project progress and make comment?
So the next opportunities would be following this hearing this evening, July 24th. This, basically your recommendation for all three, the annexation, the, and the rezoning and initial zoning, will then go to council for first reading. That will, when it's up for first reading, there is no public comment, but people can certainly attend if they want to, you know, be there in person, review the packet, review the materials. The next significant hearing where there will be public comment and all of these things will be addressed is August 28th. So that's going to be when, for second reading, the ordinances, I believe there are six, will go before city council. And then one resolution, which will be that larger development agreement. So all of those will be going before council on August 28th.
Thank you. And then I guess a follow-up to that is, at what point would the public be able to see design progress as to what the proposed solutions to some of the issues would be?
And that I'm going to leave to planning and the Stevenson group, because I don't know the answer.
We've been working, go ahead. We've been, as she mentioned, a lot of the items that were brought up, we'll have to go over what they were, traffic. This is, this is, we've been working on these for quite some time, now, traffic, transport loading and unloading, noise, lighting, fencing, and, oh, we'll get into stone walls. Those are things that we brought up that we want incorporated in, as much as we can with the city to have some oomph behind it when somebody doesn't do what they say they're going to do. One of the things that, that we did years ago when we got with Mills was we formed an architectural control committee and the key word is control. And that actually has served us very, very well. I happen to be chair of it, but there are other people that are on it also. The architect who helped us with Mills and the village and all, he's on it. We've had a, we've had a, an engineer from MIT. We've got a person who works, used to work in the governor's office on economic development, that's, that's on the committee. We have staff that, Ben used to be on it, not on it, but attending the meetings we did, Colorado Mills and like. And Bria's the same, same thing. So the one thing that we can do, though, is we can, we can, we can impose fines. And we have no, we're not shy about imposing fines if somebody violates. For instance, what we want to do on the lighting, we want to have a lighting plan showing what the lighting is, but then we also want to have a plan showing what the security lighting is. We want to know in the parking lot what lights are left on, what ones aren't, what's the lighting around the building. We, as far as fencing, we don't want chain link fencing along Seventh Avenue. We want wrought iron fencing along there. The proposal was to put in some concrete messager units for walls. No, we want the buff colored walls that you see behind Mills or that you see over at where Chick-fil-A is and all that, all along that neighborhood. We, we are planting along there, along the sidewalk. We want Seventh Avenue to be very pedestrian friendly as best as we can. So we have a number of these things that the, and if, if people don't do what they say they do, then they have a violation and then we find them. And the nice thing about this is that we can either pursue that to the ultimate end or the other thing we remind them is, is well, you know, next time you have to go before the city and next time you have to require, you know, request for any changes to the exterior, they got to go through the ACC. And we don't address billings that are, that are in violation. And so we've, we've gone through that just with a restaurant and a building owner recently where the, in fact, I've talked to Bria about it, that, you know, they, they now need, they have a vacancy, they now want to fill the vacancy. But they were saying, well, you're in violation in the past and we've told you, we let you get through the winter time, you've got to correct it and then we'll look at your signs. So we've got that mechanism and we're, and for what it's worth, there's no, Kent doesn't give special treatment. When the Toyota store was, was built, we had to change a number of things on there because Mills had done some nice upgrades and Kent was able to get these upgrades done through Toyota. So we hold everybody to the same standard. Doesn't matter what your last name is.
Thank you. One more question. Being a fellow resident of Long Colfax, I think we all have been around some of the older lighting technology and have had plenty of it shining through our windows, understanding that lighting's come a long way. And this might be more of a question for staff. I was just wondering, I don't know off the top of my head, how much light pollution is allowed to spill off of the site onto adjacent properties, if any?
So we do have foot candle limits at property lines and those limits are based on the type of use that is directly adjacent. So residential units, or residential uses have lower foot candle limits than if it's adjacent to another commercial use. We also require full cutoff fixtures, which means you don't have fixtures where light is escaping upwards towards the sky. It's all directed downwards towards the surface. So that is a significant part of mitigating light pollution is having those down cast full cutoff lights. What could potentially be addressed through the ODP is light color. Our zoning ordinance does not have limits or regulate the range of color. You know, sometimes you see yellowish, orangish light and sometimes you see very bright white bluish light. And so, you know, certainly if there is a color range that is not quite as obnoxious adjacent to residential properties, that is something that could be considered and addressed through the ODP as well.
Sure. And I apologize if this is too technical a question, but do you know how many foot candles are allowed to spill onto residential lots?
I do. I just had it pulled up.
Okay.
So adjacent to single-family dwelling or duplex properties, it's one half foot candles, so 0.5. When you get to attached dwelling or townhome and multifamily, it's one at the property line, maximum of one foot candle at the property line. And then when it's adjacent to other non-residential uses, it's two foot candles at the property line. So those are the limits that cannot be exceeded at the property lines. Now, that doesn't mean that you won't potentially have some spill across the property line, but, you know, the, the intensity of that light will be based on the foot candle.
That's right.
Yep.
And then one last, I know I keep saying that. There was a comment brought up about other vacant dealerships in the area. Are you aware of any of these?
We don't, I'm not aware of any vacant dealerships. You do drive by and you'll see that the cars aren't as plentiful as they used to be. That's a supply chain issue and Kent can probably address that better than I.
It will prove sometime, I hope, in 24 is what we're hearing. But, you know, they don't give us full disclosure as to that. But that's the reason, I mean, if you look at the Chevrolet lot, I could run a go-kart center over there and race all day long, but hopefully we'll get back to filling those up sometime this next year, year and a half. But right now, you could be waiting eight to 10 months to get a vehicle if you ordered one in certain situations. So that's how long that duration is going to be.
And one last thing on, on the Chevrolet dealership, we have to go back and remember that at that time, we were selling motorhomes. That's why that building is so huge. We were selling motorhomes and we were also servicing motorhomes and Toyota also shared it. At the time, we had the longest 20s made in North America that were shipped up from Texas to, to, on the, the portion of, kind of the north portion heading towards the west to serve motorhomes. So that's, I mean, it's a big, big, big building. It's, it's obsolete. It's, it's not energy efficient. In fact, Lexus is using part of it for, pre-COVID on, for, for car inventory and the like. So it's a monstrous building that was built a long time ago and served us well, but its lifespan has ended. Thank you.
Chair O'Neill, if you can't see behind you, Commissioner Peters has had her hand up for a bit.
I see that, yes. Commissioner Peters.
All right, thank you, Chair O'Neill, and thanks to the applicants and the residents also. My first question relates to the public meetings and some of the issues that were brought up today. Were there opportunities to address those and they didn't get adequately addressed? So folks came here today? Or were some of these issues new? I'm just trying to understand why, why there's a number of concerns that continue to exist.
You're asking us, I'm asking me?
Yes.
I think we, I mean, looking back, you can always do things better. We've had our meetings and they were poorly attended. Well, the first ones were attended well. One of them was attended well. And some of them were similar issues, traffic and noise. But since then, you know, it's kind of grown from there. And the other thing is, is that we've had, during this time, we've been trying to address those issues and I think, I think our plans do address them. We've also been trying to, we were working within the zoning, what I call the overlay zonings and, and the like. And the other thing we're working on, we were working on property acquisitions to put these assumptions together. So it's been a number of things in there, but, and then of course, we've been working with the Daniels, Worcester Homeless Association. The, so I guess it's just a combination of all those things.
And I've heard a number of encouraging responses to some of the concerns, particularly, I think it was the development agreement and including some of those concerns so that they're addressed and they're formalized. And, and is it correct, what I understood, that this agreement would go together with this request for final approval by a city council? So this would be an opportunity to address some of these things at that point in time and there would be an opportunity for public comment? And so folks could express whether they felt that it had adequately addressed or not for the city council to take under consideration? Is that, is that a correct characterization?
Yes, I don't feel that, Commissioner Peters. So yes, the, several of the concerns can be addressed in the development agreement and that will be going forward on August 28th with the six other ordinances. So there will be able, there'll be opportunity for public comment, there'll be opportunity for the city council to, you know, make additional comments or suggestions. That will also be posted online on Lakewood Speaks so everybody can view it. We're actually going to try to have it posted for the earlier date, July 24th, to give everybody a little more than a month to review it as opposed to putting it up a week prior to the city council meeting. The one thing I will mention, though, is that there are still going to be some aspects, as I mentioned, are going to be addressed in a later public improvement agreement and/or modifying the official development plan. So the development agreement that we're talking about, because it's, they're usually, some aspects that are fairly general, but we're going to put some more specific information in related to the project. But it may not have, like, for instance, there's not going to be a lot about the public improvements yet because that's going to happen in the later agreement. There also may not be, you know, while we might address like no transport vehicles on Seventh Avenue, we may not have, you know, everything about, well, sidewalk connections, things like that. But we can put stuff like about the paging system, you know, not having anything about that, that can be included. Things pertaining to lighting, that can be included, so, in either really. So we can address some things, it won't address everything because there's going to be some items that come up in later documents.
Yeah, it sounds like the traffic in particular, the sidewalks and the widening, those issues would come later. would come later, and that's just a part of this process. I know a lot of folks have expressed a desire to do things different, but this is the system that we have today, so that's understandable. But I appreciate the fact that the lighting, the paging system, and redirecting traffic, that those can all be included in that agreement. I want to circle back, and I have one more question in this category of questions for the applicant, and that relates to the character of the neighborhoods. We've heard from folks that these are single-family, you know, residential rural kind of neighborhoods. There's children, elderly, and they're close. Now, what I understood is that there's going to be this buffer area with a berm or a wall, something that would help to separate from those houses that are absolutely the closest. You know, and I guess, I'm interested to focus in on that and understand a little bit more about the mitigation measures. And, you know, I certainly appreciated the comment that, you know, this could be any of us who live in these homes. And so we'd want to be thinking about the same courtesies and respect that we would want if we had homes right there. And I guess with that in mind, I'd like to understand a little bit more of what those mitigation efforts, you know, what's envisioned to address those concerns in particular.
So along the eastern edge, there's roughly about a four-acre parcel there. A portion of it is for water quality retention and the like for the area. And then the other portion is just an open native field. And the idea would be that we would leave those things pretty much in the condition they're in, other than there may have to be some improvements as to the actual retention that's being made, that needs to be done, and that, which is fine with us. And then the idea is, no, heavily planted, and what we've found is that rather than planting trees, in this instance, away from the street, the closer you can plant them towards the street, towards the house, you get a bigger and quicker visual block, if you will. If they're in the distance, you don't, it doesn't block your view as much. The other thing is, we would like, we're going to heavily plant it. The, one of the questions, one of the suggestions came up, well, why don't we also include bushes? Great, I have no problem with that. We do a lot of work with CSU Extension to identify trees and plants that do survive. We've gone through a series of trees over the years that have infestations that didn't have it 25 years ago. So the plans will be, and I know that, working with Bree and staff, it will have adequate screening there, and it's not an issue with us. We want to be good neighbors. We want trees that are healthy, trees that will survive. The wall issue is just, there's a, it wouldn't go over there. What it would be is, it would, there's one area where there's, west of the four acres, three and a half, 3.8 acres, there's one area there where the dealership has a fence. And we're thinking, rather than just putting a fence there, why don't we go ahead and do a stone wall there? Something nice and decorative, so you don't see it visually. And then along 7th Avenue, again, the reason these improvements are taking place now is because development is taking place now. And so we have what I think is a good landscape plan to run down 7th with a sidewalk with these stone walls that are this buff-colored horizontal things that are pretty much common throughout Denver West, along, that's kind of a requirement that we have, that those have to occur anywhere the walls are, whether they're neighbors across the street. We do not like concrete walls. We don't like CMU walls, concrete masonry units. We want something that is not industrial. And so that's been incorporated in our plans, it's being incorporated in our plans along 7th Avenue from any walls that may occur along Indiana. I'm talking about walls for landscaping and for, you know, you have a wall that, you have an area, you have a sidewalk, you have a planning area, and then because of grade, you may have to have another smaller wall, so that upper wall be done with the stone walls versus some sort of man-made walls. It's similar to what you might see in front of the Chevrolet dealership, for instance, currently, or that's used throughout Denver West, for walls for retainage and the like.
Thank you for that clarification. So do you envision a berm at that, from those houses with trees? I'm trying to visualize. If I live across the street, what am I looking at when I look towards the dealership?
We've done berming before, I think, if, in dealing with the Daniels-Welchester representatives, if they want berming, berming will be there, not a problem. If that helps, if that helps with the landscape and helps with the buffering, that's not a problem. It depends on what they want. We looked at one time about seeing whether or not it should be fenced, and we don't think it should be. And so if they want berming, we'll do berming. It's not an issue. It's more of, like I said, we've been dealing with, and the Daniels-Welchester Homeless Association, and they've been pretty dogged on what they'd like to have. And if it's berming, it's berming, it's fine, not a problem. Whatever we can do to help mitigate, mitigate or help with the views, it's important to us. That's why there's four acres sitting over there.
And is that something, this is a question for staff, that could go in the development agreement?
Something I think related to buffers, landscape screening is probably more appropriate in the ODP. Right now, so the zoning ordinance does have landscape buffer requirements for commercial uses adjacent to single-family dwellings, duplex dwellings. So this project will, at a minimum, have to meet those buffer requirements. And there's options. The more space you have horizontally, the fewer trees are required, or trees and plants are required in the buffer, the more that buffer area narrows, the more heavily planted it has to be. So that's already built into the zoning and the ODP. Certainly, if there's additional screening or requirements that need to be considered, they can. I would just say it's probably better to leave some flexibility, just because we aren't in specific site design yet. And until you really get to understand some of the grading and other things that are happening, I think that's the point where you would, you would know for sure whether a berm is feasible in that area. So I think we could include standards that help increase landscape buffers and help mitigate some of that stuff. But I would maybe just caution that, you know, to keep it as options like the zoning ordinance currently does, and to ensure that, you know, screening will be addressed through those.
And did I see correctly that there's, in the change of zoning, that from the commercial to the limited commercial, that buffer was lower? It was like 25, it went down to 15? I thought I saw a slide earlier about that. Can you speak to that?
Setbacks.
There's a setback.
Oh, setbacks may have been what you were referring to. And yes, the setbacks are less than what are allowed in the current PD, but they do align with existing base zone districts in our current zoning ordinance. And setbacks are different than buffer, landscape buffer areas.
Okay. And there's no, so the buffer areas that are being discussed, those are the only ones that are going to be adjacent to residential properties? The setbacks wouldn't be against, you know, non-residential parts of the property?
So setbacks would be required regardless everywhere. But yes, if there's a right-of-way in between commercial property and single-family dwelling, buffers aren't necessarily triggered. However, the conceptual land use plan for the east side does show the intent to provide landscape buffers along that frontage to help buffer the existing neighborhood directly to the north across 7th Avenue. And you're correct, the buffers would not be required when you have two commercial properties adjacent to each other. And that's currently not proposed in the zoning.
And the buffer zone is an elective? Or it is not required, it is elective?
So it's required in areas where those conditions exist, when you have commercial development directly adjacent to single-family or duplex. The way the zoning ordinance deals with those is there's a menu list, so options. So if you're providing a 20-foot wide buffer space, then there's a certain number of, you know, trees required to be planted along that, you know, dimensional frontage. If you go down to, say, a five-foot buffer, then you need a lot more trees and shrubs within that five-foot buffer than what would be required if you're essentially pushing development back further on a horizontal dimension. Does that help?
Yeah, okay. You know, and I guess I just want to make sure that there's an opportunity. I know you said you don't want to limit the flexibility by putting something in the development agreement that, you know, even though it gives a guarantee upfront, it may limit in that design later. In that next phase with the ODP, I don't believe there's an opportunity for public input. Is there an opportunity to put into the development agreement that, you know, there would be an opportunity for public input and interaction and continued working with those residents throughout that process?
So I'll let the applicant address, you know, the options of what they're willing to do in the development agreement, you know, regarding adjacent owners. This is an agreement between the city and the applicant, so it has to be things that we can physically, you know, enforce or make sure are happening. And again, I think if we're talking about design standards, the ODP is the more appropriate location for those than the development agreement. And when I talk about options, it would be things like saying a berm and/or a fence and/or a combination of one of those with additional landscaping should be provided, right? So then you're giving some options. So if grading or drainage cannot accommodate a berm in that location, then there's some other options that still provide screening that would achieve the same goal. So that's kind of what I'm thinking about if we are to increase some of the buffer requirements in the ODP, but still leaving flexibility.
Yeah, that sounds good. And I, isn't it correct that in that, when that ODP is being put together, that's just between the city and the applicant? There's no public input at that point?
So the ODP is what we're discussing today as part of the rezoning. If there are changes that need to be made to address planning commission's concerns, then we will work with the applicant to get those done as soon as possible, because we'll be turning around and preparing the packet for city council, which is the next public hearing, which will also be considering the ODP. So the zoning, the ODP is part of the public process, and there is another opportunity to weigh in on any revisions and the proposal with city council. Once we get into a site development stage, that is administrative. There aren't public processes required unless there are major variances or waivers needed that are outside of essentially the zoning that the applicant is asking to be established. And so in that case, we're really referring back to the ODP, back to the zoning ordinance on what the requirements are, and as administrative review staff is ensuring that those things are being met through the site plan.
And that's the piece, that specific design phase that takes the guidance from the ODP. You know, so I certainly appreciate that in the ODP, there'll be a list of, these are the options, and that they'll be looked at at that time when the specific site design is being undertaken. I guess what I'm wondering is if there's an opportunity for public input into that, and if that can be formalized. I understand that's not part of the process today. You know, I think that's, it's difficult, because we only hear from people here, and there's only one opportunity, and there's not an opportunity at that time. But that's kind of really where the rubber meets the road. And I think that that would help, you know, to ensure that those needs are met. It's difficult for us in this position, because to not have, you know, another opportunity to hear from the public, to make sure that these, the responses that we've heard today, that they are, you know, that they've met the need to that extent. So in that case, just trying to look for some opportunity. I've seen that the applicant is willing, that they've certainly worked with the community organization, but we did hear from a couple other folks who had some pretty strong concerns, who live really close. And I would just want to make sure that those concerns were adequately addressed. And I know that that's not part of this process, you know, and the way this hearing is. But I would like an opportunity to hear back from those folks on some of these responses. And I, you know, so I'm just hoping that at least there's an opportunity, they can speak at city council, that if these, you know, when this comes up, because it seems like there's a willingness on the part of the applicant, and that some of those concerns could potentially be addressed, actually all of them potentially. So I guess I will leave it at that, and I really appreciate the long discussion and entertainment of these concerns.
Thank you, Commissioner Peters. So I just want to clarify, this is that process. This is the comment process. We're discussing it with the applicant. And this is where we're talking about how those things can be rolled into the PD entitlement package in Congress with zoning.
Correct. This is the process to create the rules and regulations for future development. So just like our zoning ordinance requires specific things of development, that is all implemented through, you know, site plan staff review. The ODP, you know, serves as the mechanism in conjunction with the zoning ordinance to ensure those regulations.
Right. So things like light temperature matching, and how many foot candles, and baffles on lighting, and beautification to the surrounding area, those things become part of the PD, which then becomes officially the official.
Rules.
Right.
Development rules.
So it's like codified at that point. Right.
Yeah, this is approved through an ordinance. So yes.
So we are discussing those things now. Those are being rolled into whatever this conversation turns into. Once we approve or do not approve this process, then, or recommend, then it will go forward to city council, and you guys start this conversation with city council, and there's another time for public comment.
Correct. And part of that conversation with city council is a summary and the recommendations that come from you. And if there are specifics that the planning commission decides needs to be addressed before it goes to city council, then, you know, staff will go through what those revisions were as part of our presentation to city council.
And then I think I just want to also clarify that, once that PD becomes the OPD after this process, the entire process, it is not possible to say, oh, we're not going to provide baffles now, these lights are cheaper. It is now codified. You cannot change that without.
It's a requirement for us to approve the site plan.
Right. So I just want to make that.
Yes.
Clear.
Yes, thank you.
That's what we're doing right now. Okay. Okay. I just, I might have a question.
And so we won't, just to, we won't see it again, but that will be included in the package that goes to city council.
City council will see it again.
Correct.
Right. The public will see it again. And city council then will vote on it.
Perfect. Yeah.
Okay.
Yes. But we will not be able to vote on that unless we make amendments tonight on our recommendation. And we will be, our vote, unless we make amendments, will be on what's in our, on this ODP that was provided to us, which does not include any of those things.
Correct. If the, if the planning commission's motion and resolution included specific things that the applicant needs to address, then that goes to city council for their consideration. Yep.
Okay, okay. Sorry, I just.
Do you want me to go first?
Yeah, go ahead. Commissioner Kettner.
As long as you've been, you've been standing here so long, I'll ask my question that's probably mostly for you. I tried to focus a lot on the ODP, since that's what we're really making a recommendation on. And there was a lot of reference to the DWACC, the Denver West.
Architectural.
Architectural Committee.
Control.
Control Committee. Thank you, two Cs there. But there was no reference, I was wondering if you could, because there's a lot of verbiage in the ODP about that, and a lot about what they do. Who are they? Do they already exist? How are their members? Is this the same group you were saying that you're part of? So I was wondering if you could address that.
It was formed, it was formed back when we were dealing with Colorado.
It was formed, it was formed back when we were dealing with Colorado Mills. And it was, it was formed basically because in all candor, at that time, if you looked at a Colorado Mills mall, it was pretty garish. So what we did is we formed that in conjunction with the city. And so what happens when plans come through affecting our development to the city, the city sends the plans to the ACC. And the ACC is like I said, she's retired now, but she's a kind of a council, MIT graduate engineer, gentleman who worked for Governor Romer and other governors in the economic development branch. The architect that we've used initially with Mills, it's myself. And then we have, depending on what's being discussed, staff is at those meetings too. And so that there's a coordination between what the ACC is seeing, what the city is seeing, and then how we discuss solving problems, or we each give our opinions of what we need, how we want to see things change regardless of who submits it. And then that ultimately then goes, is incorporated on the city's plans. As far as the ACC goes, it's, so that's the group that it's comprised of. And alls we look at are anything that's exterior. We do not get involved in the interior of any buildings. If they want to put advertising on the windows, it has to be 18 inches away from the windows. That's how they get around it. So please.
So what I'm kind of getting at here, and this is more for staff, although I think since you've had a project before the city, the city now has a Design Review Commission. Is there, was there any thought into having the Design Review Commission part of this ACC?
No.
Would you be amenable to that?
No. And the reason for that is, that was the condition of when we came in and we annexed. And at that time, the reason is, is because, and if you look at it, so any new buildings at Denver West went through the ACC, any apartments went through the ACC, the village went through the ACC, the dealerships went through the ACC, Mills went through the ACC. Part of it is, is that we cannot exceed anything that, anything that the city allows, but we can restrict it. So one of the things we restrict is we say, you know what? You can have, if you have a, you're building a building for a restaurant, you have 100 square feet. Now, if you come up with superior architectural design and materials, we can look at maybe granting more to get closer to what the city allows. So it's different and it's unique in that respect, but it basically, it clamps down on what the city allows and it releases it depending on design, architecture, and compatibility. So I don't mean to be flippant by saying no, but it's, it's the only way we've been able to, and trust me, we do this hand in glove with the city.
Oh, absolutely.
It's just another way in which sometimes, in all candor, the city can give us cover on things we ask, and sometimes we can give them cover on things that they would like to see, but they can't because it's allowed with the current zoning.
Well, and as I mentioned, the Design Review Commission is new and hasn't really, so because this is the ODP and we can be more specific, is it okay to not have the Design Review Commission part of this? That's more of a staff question, I think. Or what would the reason that the Design Review Commission wouldn't be?
Right. And so that's, Commissioner Kettner, thank you, because that's kind of what I was, I was looking for you to ask, is that last part there. So the impetus for creating the Design Review Commission was those areas that didn't have either an Architectural Control Committee or a Design Review Committee, to have kind of a secondary level of review. And the kind of thought behind that is, is then we target either neighborhoods or some kind of planning area, and then we apply a kind of a citywide Design Review Commission, and then we go into that area, whether it's a plan or design guidelines or some combination, then we come up with additional review criteria for that area. And so I understand Mr. Stevenson's hesitation for saying no. It is a possibility in the future in working with the Denver West ACC if they would want to merge or have the city kind of step into that process. That's an opportunity that we could look at in the future, but it would kind of be a, I don't know if I want to say public process, but a negotiation that would occur at the future. At this point in time, we don't really have any intents to going into Belmar, Denver West, Academy Park, there's one more. I think there are three or four existing additional review levels, and we wouldn't necessarily look to put city, additional city review in those areas where they already have it.
Thank you.
We'd be happy to visit with the commissions that you've set up. And if we disband, if we disband the ACC, it goes to the city. That was part of the original agreement. So if all of a sudden we all get tired and say, hey, we're done, you know, enough of this, then we can just disband it, and then the city goes ahead and takes it. The other thing I should mention, we can also, we can also require things that exceed county or city standards. We can, we can say, you know what? We need more trees here, so you got to do it, or, you know, we're not going to approve it because you're not going to get something else. It's been very effective, and because part of the problem is, is I have seen nothing but, no, I shouldn't say it, terribly ugly designs, construction, and no thought whatsoever of the long, of the last, what happens. I just want to get it built, sell it, and move on. And so that was a requirement going in with the city, I said, that's the only way I'm going to do it, because back then, I can't remember government entity really building anything that we could be proud of. And that was a personal bias that I have, I apologize. But I spent a lot of time going to different places, and Country Club Plaza in Kansas City was one of them, was the first, the country's first outdoor shopping center, major shopping center. And they've got artwork everywhere, and they've got all, you know, it's got, they've got people places everywhere. We are not a large company that can fund all this all at one time, so we have to do it over time. And so with all due respect, I would not embrace the idea. But we, and part of it because it's worked very, very well. Staff has been, they've been terrific. So we can require more trees than what the staff is allowing.
And it's nice to know, you said what happens should it disband, because part of what we're doing is, you know, approving this, you know, God forbid something happens and it's not you, we're left with this document, and it might, you know. So I appreciate that, which is, sort of gets to my next question, that I'm wondering if it's in the ODP, and I just didn't see it. We've spent a lot of time talking about this buffer zone, which is Planning Area 2. Is there anything that says there can't be a building? And this honestly comes from a buffer zone in an ODP near my neighborhood, and the neighbors were very surprised when building went into the buffer zone.
Thanks, Commissioner Kettner. Let me just pull it up really quick, and I can tell you what, and so it's in the planning areas, in the intent of the planning areas.
Yeah, it says the intent is a buffer zone. Is there anything that?
There's nothing in here that strictly prohibits structures there, but it is needed for stormwater detention. So there are going to be design and facilities in that area that may not allow for any future buildings. Part of the agreement?
What's part of the requirement for putting that?
The buffer.
So it's a good portion, it's also, well, there's a portion for that, but it also is part of our 20% open space requirement too.
So what, so essentially, I think what they're saying is that if that has building, there's other areas on the property that need to become open space and landscape.
Right, and it would be a different area. So that's, so there's nothing to really guarantee it, other than most likely that's what it would turn out to be.
Let us work on that a little bit, see if we can come up something. I think we've worked with staff on a number of these things, and they've been very creative.
Thank you. I really appreciate that. I mean, that makes it, means so much more comfortable. I wish we could, I wish we could have you come back and present us, you know, with the modifications that you're talking about.
Be given three minutes, I'd be happy to do it. Longer is fine, too. Okay.
I have a couple more. Hopefully I did say.
No, go ahead. I can finish, because I just have a comment.
Well, as long as we're kind of on the subject, one of my questions was the open space for Planning Area 3, still on the, you know, eastern portion one. Are there homes immediately adjacent? That's a totally vacant parcel right now, right?
That parcel is on the west side of Eldridge, and it's vacant.
Yeah, it's the only one that's like on the north.
It's got the northern corner there on Seventh, yes.
Side of Seventh.
Yes.
And are there homes immediately to the east of it?
There would be, there are, there are homes east of Eldridge, across the street, yes.
It says, which is my house.
But, but there's, but we're not envisioning any expansion of single-family homes into that parcel?
No. Not in our parcel, no.
I was just, okay, I'll just stop there. Probably not, was there any look into, this is initial development of this part, of most of this, right? Or all of this is initial development? And I guess that's the only question, the comment there is, a lot of what can be done under the current zoning could create even more traffic than this plan. And unfortunately, we can't control whether or not an area gets developed. It does bother me greatly that we're leaving a bunch of concrete that will need to be redeveloped in another area. I have had to sort of let that go because that is not what we are recommending about tonight. It's about the annexation and the zoning of this, which is slightly more limiting than what is there now for the most part. And then my last question is, well, part of it, I think, is for you, Mr. Stevenson. And I was very surprised to hear staff say, because it is written into the ODP is the vesting. And it probably was the part that gave me the greatest concern when I read it. On a technical level, it was difficult to read where the vesting was, and then the term being someplace else, I don't know if that was something that you'd consider, you know, putting the term where the vesting is. But this is an unlimited vest, this is indefinite vesting.
Oh, go ahead, please. Come. Thanks.
Hi, my name is Amy Breima, and I represent the Stevensons. I don't live in Lakewood. The vesting period, yeah, the vesting period is actually 20 years, or that's what we're asking for, and it is in the ODP. And so if you didn't see it, maybe, Bree, I can tell you the page, but I know it's in there.
I did. It said 20 years with an automatic 10-year, with an automatic 10-year extension of all the time. So if it automatically extends 10 years, and then it can extend again 10 years, that amounts to.
Forever.
Forever. Correct.
The proposed annexation agreement, it's 20 years. And Lauren can also speak to this issue.
So we took out the automatic renewal?
Yeah, there's no automatic renewal in the, we're calling it the Annexation, Zoning, Development, and Vesting Agreement, but it's 20 years fixed.
Okay, but in the document we were provided, it had that.
And I, I don't draft any of the ODP documents, so I'd have to ask for clarification maybe from staff, but I know.
I'm pretty sure I didn't dream it.
I, yeah.
It's not legally binding, though.
The 20, the 20 years is.
Kind of standard and.
So the vesting agreement will be part of the, the vesting component will be part of the development agreement. It is stated in the ODP as well. But that is adopted by ordinance correctly, or correct, Lauren? So, I mean, City Council has to approve that vesting through an ordinance.
Correct.
Yeah.
Which controls over the ODP. The ordinance is the controlling document.
Right, right. The vesting was written, and it often is written into the ODP. I mean, I've seen it in other ODPs that we have. I have never seen that automatic 10-year thing, so, but that will not be there when it goes to City Council, is what you're saying.
I would say the automatic 10-year renewal is pretty common in some, in a lot of the ODPs I see. So it does get renewed until the property is developed, or it can be renewed until the property is fully developed. So it really, the vesting really just establishes the rules and regulations that apply for a period of time to allow development to occur. So if we adopt, if this all gets approved, you know, tomorrow, and then the city comes back in and changes something in our zoning ordinance that is, you know, applicable to this ODP or this development.
It would not apply to this.
Then, yeah, then they, based on their 20-year request, you know, they have 20 years under the standards that are replaced when everything gets approved to develop under those standards. So it provides them some assurance to navigate, you know, market trends and things.
Oh, absolutely. I wasn't opposed to the vesting. It was that automatic 10-year renewal period that I, so you believe that a 20-year vesting period is reasonable?
Well, the, that's what the development agreement is going to say, but the renewal is different from the vesting. So the renewal would be that those rules continue to still apply, if applicable.
Which amount, okay, thank you, which, which from where I stand amounts to, and if it automatically renews without any kind of a public process, then that's an indefinite vesting until the project is done.
Until it's complete.
Until it's complete.
But, I'm sorry, but based on this process and then the City Council process, based on what is agreed upon, right? That's what, that's what's locked.
The ODP, what's in the ODP is locked and can't, and can't be changed until, until whoever owns the property has decided that the development is complete.
It can be changed through an amendment to the ODP. And ODPs are amended all the time.
Correct. Oh, absolutely.
And so it's not that it can't be amended, it can be amended through a process.
Correct.
And usual, lots of times, ODPs are amended five or six times before the development is finally built. And that's, that's totally normal, and it happens in the city of Lakewood all the time for an amendment to an ODP to occur.
Commissioner Buckley, did you have something to add?
Yes, I did have some follow-up questions on this. Thank you. I just want to understand the legal mechanisms that all the things that we were just talking about in this discussion happened. I'm just reading the Section 3L of the Automotive Campus Official Development Plans, that's the east side. It says, "The vested property rights created by this ODP run with the land and remain in effect through the term of this ODP."
And then in other places.
Okay, yes, I didn't see that other place. So the term of this ODP is also defined in the ODP? Or is that defined in the vesting agreement that the City Council has to pass?
It's the term of the ODP.
Yeah, that's where I must have read the 10-year extension thing.
Yeah, I remember reading a 10-year extension thing as well, but just the language about the actual vesting rights, says it runs with the lands and remains in effect.
That's actually statutory language. Vested development rights are governed by Colorado revised statute, and they run with the land. That's the way it works everywhere in Colorado.
Okay. Okay. So, yeah, I just, I guess the intent of my question is, understand what is the exact legal mechanism by which we're enforcing this 20-year time? Is it the vesting agreement, or is it the ODP?
So it's going to be, it's actually going to be there, so there's going to be two vesting ordinances that City Council have to look at. There's also then going to be this development agreement that we've discussed where the vesting is going to be contained within that. So, and those are going to control over the ODP.
Okay.
The ordinance is going to control over the ODP. So we'll certainly go back. I know that, I hear what you're all saying about 20 years with an automatic renewal, vesting running with the land or the term. Perhaps there's some way to clarify, but those other documents, the two vesting ordinances and the development agreement, are both going to have to be approved by council, and those have the specific 20-year fixed vesting period.
Okay. Thank you. Well, I had the floor had a related question to some of this preceding discussion. The issues before us tonight are to approve the zoning of the east and west side, and the zonings in the ODP. And so the language before us tonight is what we're approving, and I think Commissioner Kettner alluded to this earlier. We've discussed ideas of, I guess, some higher standards we want, like with the buffering and so forth. And so I guess we will need to come up with some language tonight, if my understanding is correct, to put in a motion to amend this ODP before we put it up to vote for passing up and down. Do I have that process correct? If we want to. If, if we want to, you know, include some of these higher commitments about the landscaping and buffering and lighting and whatever else within the ODP so that it's enforceable in the future.
That, that is one way. So I guess I could answer your question kind of correct. And as I'm kind of, I'm kind of waiting for this point in the meeting to kind of elaborate a little bit. So there's kind of three changes that you can make this evening. If you're, if you're asking, and one is general, and you, you need to make specific recommendations, right? I heard, ask the applicant to work with the neighborhood. That's not something that we can codify either in the ODP or the development agreement and so forth. So that is just the word of the applicant, working with the neighbor, the city's not going to be able to enforce that. If there's something specific that you want to modify within the ODP, the way it's set up, you're more than welcome to do that. The, the staff recommendation that we've brought for you, you know, I'm listening to lighting and landscaping and so forth. We have the zoning ordinance, so the material that's not covered in the ODP is covered in the zoning ordinance. So if you have something specific, I'm just using an example, and I'm looking at Commissioner Gribbly-Unis. He asked specifically what was the foot candle. So a foot candle for non-residential next to residential is a half foot. You want to lower that, you may lower that, and that's something, you've got to come up with a number. So that's one way, we could either do that in the ODP. I would defer to council, whether she prefer that, that goes in the development agreement. Some of the other things, again, and I think this is more, I would keep it out of the ODP and put it in a development agreement. The intercom system, so I've heard no paging. I would maybe defer to council to come up with some language. I don't know, external speakers or volume or something. So a paging system is one thing, but an external intercom, you need to be kind of specific because they probably do have an internal intercom or buzz system that they use. So you're referring to the noise and the conversation outside, and so you would need to make that change. And I think that would be more appropriate in the development agreement versus the actual ODP. So you've kind of got three things. The ambiguous, which we can't really codify or enforce, something specific to the zoning document, standards that relate to materials, setbacks, heights, uses, and then these kind of management-type systems that they do within the business itself, I think that's more appropriate to the development agreement.
Okay, thank you, that's all helpful.
Any other questions or comments?
I do have, I do have questions on totally separate topics.
For, for Stevenson?
I don't know, probably for lots of different people.
But regarding this hearing?
No.
Yes, yes, regarding this, regarding what we're discussing right now.
Yeah, regarding what we're voting on tonight, yes, regarding vesting rights, no.
Okay, yes, then please continue.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, an issue we have not touched on tonight, I did notice in the staff report, it mentioned a floodplain of fairgrounds gulched to the west of the western site. I actually looked up the city's floodplain map online, it's on the same GIS website map where you can find the city's current zoning. It appears from that map that the entirety of the western site, you know, where Alexis and so forth is today, is within a mile-high flood district delineated floodplain. It is outside of a FEMA delineated floodplain. Yeah, what, what impact does that floodplain have on future development, extra, you know, steps they have to go through to deal with that? And I guess just based on your historical experience there, is that accurate? Do you say, you know, has there been flooding problems on the property? How much is this a concern?
I think the, as a point of reference, where the Denver West Village was, was also in the floodplain. Where Nissan was, it was in the floodplain. Where the dealerships are, they were in the floodplain. They, I don't know if they've updated the maps yet, but what we have done is we've been working with staff and Ben and the like, our engineers have been, in addressing the floodplain issue on both, on the west side. So obviously, no development can be done until, until that's addressed as part of it. One of the things that we had done years ago was, what had happened with, as a bit of history, off of Green Mountain and the like, and through the fairgrounds, the water would come through, they'd hit Sixth Avenue. When they built Sixth, the, the pipes they put underneath Sixth were too small. So they would overflow, they'd back up, and the only opening they had was down Indiana Street. And so what we did is we, with the county and with the city of Lakewood and ourselves, we went ahead and piped a lot of what's happening, all the way down from, from Indiana, all the way down to where the Outback Steakhouse is, for instance. And then that water then goes into our, our ponds and lakes at Denver West and are retained there. So it's just, it's just the next step in developing property that we're, that we're going to need to do. So we'll address that at the same time.
So you're saying that covert upgrades to a larger diameter pipe has already happened?
Yes, that has happened.
Okay, so is it correct to say then that the city's floodplain map needs to be updated and that the property on the west side is no longer in a floodplain?
I wouldn't, oh, I, I wouldn't say that because I can't, but I, I will say that it's being looked at through, certainly on the east side right now, and it will be looked at on the west side. We did all those improvements at that time, but the, but part of it was, they also, we also are retaining a site right across from Nissan for an additional water retention and storm quality management. So we were, we're waiting until this property is redeveloped so we can go ahead and address those issues.
Right, certainly. Yeah, I guess, one concern, of course, oh, go ahead, sir.
I was going to clarify from the city's standpoint. Yes, a portion of the site, you know, there's a good chunk of floodplain that does run through there. So that is something that we, you know, one of the requirements of the site planning process will be to make sure that the development meets with the city's floodplain management ordinance and likely will require some additional improvements to be able to, to either provide some, some more piping or to, to modify the floodplain limits to be able to, to do development in through that stretch.
Sure, thank you. Yeah, so one concern I would have is that doing things like installing bigger pipes or regrading channels or building ponds, all the things you do to reduce the sizes of floodplanes and contain the water within its proper channel, like all that costs a lot of money and that affects the economics of a redevelopment proposal. And so here on the west side where the floodplain exists, you know, your proposal is to vacate the car dealerships that are currently on that property, to take them across the other side, as we've been talking about all night. And there will be in your plans, commercial redevelopment that's yet unspecified there in the future, but just leaving costly infrastructure upgrades to fix the floodplain out there for this unknown nebulous, hopefully, future development, it seems like a risk. It seems like a discouragement from that development. And I know, Mr. Stevenson, you mentioned there tonight that you do not want an empty lot there blighting the area. I believe that's the last thing you want, so it's, what's the plan to overcome that economic challenge for the redevelopment of the site?
We've, we've been able to, to address those issues through the last 50 years and we'll do it again this, this time around. It'll be, it'll be, there's certain, like, there's, there's a, a piff, if you will, on all the retail sales. And that money goes towards these types of public improvements and the like. And so we have other things set up that would help fund, as well as just capital on our own. And the capital that we use to build the new buildings and the like, we can go ahead and draw those lines of credit. Like Kent was saying, the last thing we want to do is leave a derelict building there that becomes an attractive nuisance and people, you know, we've got, we've got to chase people away. So the idea is we would like to tear that down as soon as we can, and we'd have to go in and obviously, however we do it and whatever we, however we reclaim it, it's going to have to be approved by the city. But just as we've built the roads to handle all this traffic, we've built our drainage basin to handle all of this. And one of the last pieces we connected on the north side of I-70, we had to, we finally built an apartment complex that allowed us then to finally finish all the drainage work that happened there. And then, and it piped it down to our system. And in the interim, the property was left fallow, but, I mean, kids were using it and it was, it wasn't, it wasn't a blighted area. So sometimes when you leave something vacant and you plant, ride grass on it, that's fine.
Sure.
But that's part of development.
Okay.
And especially if you take a long-term view on how development needs to be done.
Sure.
I don't mean to be dismissive, it's just that I guess maybe we're numb to the pain.
Okay, well, I'm glad to hear that as well. I guess just part of development too, that I've heard before is a developer says, well, I can't do that floodplain fix, that's too expensive, I'm just going to walk away from the project. It seems to me that you're saying you're numb to it, that you're, you don't see it as an economic obstacle to making your plan viable, and so that's reassuring.
No, we've, we've set this up in anticipation, everything we've done is in anticipation of what happens in the next 25, 30, 40 years. And like I said, and we do believe in development paying for itself. So between internal capital and then, and then the, the district and the PIF and all of that, that, that helps us get, that helps us complete our master plan on the drainage.
Okay, thank you. I had a separate question about the west side, not floodplain-related. This is language in the ODP. It's under Section 2, oh, no, Section 3 Development Regulations, subsection D, Parking Requirements. And then number 2, under the parking requirements, says, "Maximum allowable parking counts, as calculated in Section 17, Article 8 of the Lakewood Zoning Ordinance, shall not apply to land uses permitted within this development." Sir, you do not even know what the commercial development that will happen in there is yet.
Correct.
The most we know is it will be something that's permitted by the zone that you're requesting to be zoned to. Why do we need to waive the maximum parking requirements, which are in our code for many good reasons, just for this particular site?
The reason is, it's similar to what happened previously at, at Denver West when we tore down the Pepper Mill and Victoria Station. We have an Olive Garden there, we have a, I forget the name of the burger place, we have an AT&T. The parking requirements that the city has and has had, a lot of it was formed based upon, I think, envisioning light rail and the like. And so they were squeezing down the maximum number of parking spaces. I could not get a restaurant to go there. And so then I did go back to the city and I did say, you know, you've got to lift those because this, we are not, we are not a, a urbanized area such. We have, don't have great, RTDs pretty much nonexistent to a great extent. And, and we're not near the light rail line. And we're not even near, the, the, the closest stop we have is, is the Kissimmee and Ride there on by Red Rocks Community College. So that's why, that's why we eliminated that. We need the flexibility based upon changing needs within, outside of our control, within, within the economy and retailers and the like. It, it closes the door on the ability to service certain restaurants or certain other users there by restricting the parking.
Okay, I see. Yeah, it's just, it is a requirement that we impose on all the other commercial zone districts in the city. And, you know, certainly, we have cases that we talk about a lot where there's developments that don't have enough parking. But I just do also feel that we don't talk about enough about the fact that there are bad consequences to having too much parking. You know, it detracts from the amount of usable land that can be put to some beneficial economic use, which is, you know, a key goal of this rezoning, of course. We just talked about all this floodplain stuff, you know, too much, too much impervious area because you're just building extra parking that doesn't really get needed, does contribute to a lot of extra, you know, runoff and, in our watersheds and water quality degradation and expansion of floodplains and, you know, a host of these issues. And so, you know, there are good environmental reasons, I feel, good, good, good economic development reasons why, I believe it was 10 years ago when the city rewrote its zoning code, we included parking maximums and...
And we got the, I'm sorry, please.
I, I just, you know, I'm skeptical that the, the parking maximums that I feel are quite high, that apply everywhere else in a commercial zone in the city, really need to be waived here for you to have a successful project on that lot. I would, I would think intuitively that if we do adhere to those maximums that, you know, it would not oversize the parking and therefore it would right-size the amount of business, which is what actually generates the sales tax and what actually contributes to economic vibrancy, which is what we want, so... Yeah, I'm a fan of our parking maximums, basically.
And Commissioner Buckley, staff did not oppose that recommendation by the applicant, and a couple reasons. So I can specifically refer to, I think restaurant is 10 per thousand. We run up with about any restaurant or fast food business in anywhere in the city that that, that parking count is too low. So that, that's just an example where, we, we figure out ways to, to make the development work and so forth. This particular instance, we're also looking at kind of a large regional mall. And yes, they may end up with a lot more parking in the kind of short term, but in the near term, as you've looked at some of the areas out at Denver West, they continue to add buildings. So it, it, and, and this is where I kind of step out and the real estate professionals can come in, there's kind of lease agreements as well, right? So certain businesses want guaranteed a certain number of spaces. Overall, I think as we start to see the redevelopment of the west side, those parking maximums will, will kind of balance out to what we have anyway with continued development and redevelopment out there.
And I'm, to be honest, I'm very hypersensitive about having any traffic overflow into the neighborhoods. All of our development to date has not had that. We, we, the office park does not have a direct access into any of the neighborhoods, even though there's a street there that could have, actually, two of them. The only, the access is coming off of 20th to Eldridge and the like. There's no, there's no access from the White Acres neighborhood into the Colorado Mills. It's off of Colfax, it's off of Indiana. And I, we, we just don't allow, and we fight very hard to make sure that none of our parking bleeds out into a neighborhood. And that's also the reason, we just need that kind of flexibility. Hey, the enlightened self-interest is, I pack that full of as much retail as I can, which, which happened on the promenade, in my opinion, with, and then sell it and walk away. But that's just not how we operate. So I, I totally respect what you're saying and I understand. I just think, again, we want to develop for the right reasons, at the right time, with the right product. And, and you're right, what's going to happen over time around the Mills Mall and the like is you're going to see, you're going to start to see the footprint shrink and more, more commercial development alike will occur there over the, in the next decade or two or three. And there'll be structured parking and things like that long after I'm gone. But that's, that's the reason for it. And it just, and to get the quality kind of tenants you want to get, especially if they're restaurants that are not in town or that they're falling in love with the east side of town and that we'd like to have them out here because, you know, people out here would like to have something, you know, also kind of nice out there. We just need that kind of flexibility to do it. We're pioneering to a great degree, historically, we always have been and we still are with some of the tenants. And, and so we just need that flexibility. It helps us because we've talked to the brokerage community specifically about this and this, with their recommendations.
Excuse me, Mr. Stevenson, I'm sorry to interrupt. Can we keep it down in the audience, please, and be respectful of everyone sitting here? Thank you. It's not appropriate.
All right, yeah, and Mr. Stevenson, I do appreciate, yeah, your concern for the parking spilling over into the neighborhood too, you know. Definitely our context where, you know, it's a good thing we have the parking minimums because we want to avoid those kinds of things, but I don't know.
I, I understand, I do understand.
I'm just not a fan of this particular requirement. We require everything, something of everything else, but I, I do admire a lot of the other things you're doing. I think it's overall a good development, so this may not be my hill to die on, but it's, it's not my favorite provision of this ODP, for sure. I will have a question as well about, both ODPs contain similar language to this. This is in Section 1, General Provisions, subsection D, Relationship to Other Requirements. It says, "If a conflict exists between, one, the city's regulations and ordinances, and, two, this official development plan..." and, two, this official development plan and either standard, plat or plan related collectively to the ODP and related agreements, the ODP and related agreements govern." So contrast that language, contrast that language with, I had it pulled up on my phone earlier. I'm going to read something from Chapter 17, the zoning code. "The standards of the applicable zone, base zone district or districts included in the PD as identified in the zoning ordinance shall apply to the PD unless specifically modified as part of the PD. Any modification to the standards shall be identified as part of the ODP." So that's everything we've been talking about tonight in the ODP. You know, I like a lot of these modifications in the ODP. We need them, they're really, you know, essential, especially the things about the ACC. We absolutely want to keep all that. Just 17.3.6.5 point A goes on to say redevelopment within a PD district might, may apply either the standards of the base zone district or the standards of the ODP. My interpretation of that clause in our zoning ordinance has always been to say that when there's a redevelopment, I have a question in a second, I guess maybe before turning about how we define redevelopment as opposed to development. But that clause allows a developer to stick to the standards we're putting in, in this ODP, or the base standards of the zone districts, which in this case are, are less strict. We're adding in all the things about the Architecture Control Committee, the buffering space. We've alluded to the fact that there's probably going to be amendments later tonight that we're going to enhance those things further. So how do we ensure, given that this language exists in the zoning code, that however many years down the road, what's in this document is governing and not, not something else?
Right. In the intent of that statement, so the relationship to other regulations, the one in the ODP, it essentially calls out conflicting provision. The other one is specific to the planned development district, and it doesn't necessarily apply to the ODP. What, what we were finding is when we added the base zone district to the official development plans, right? So that essentially it related more to uses. Developers were saying, well, we want this height, but we want this parking standard. So the ODP had a higher parking standard and they wanted more parking spaces, but they, they wanted a lower height or a higher height. So they were picking and choosing, I don't know if you want to say the most permissive or the provisions in each ordinance that were kind of more conducive to their redevelopment. So that provision essentially states, you're going to use the base zone district standards, i.e. height setbacks and so forth. You're not picking uses or you use the ODP and then they have modified standards.
Right. Understood that we're not picking uses. The uses are, the uses in the zoning code plus what's specified in the ODP.
Correct.
In this case, nothing additional, which is fine.
Correct.
But it's the standards, right?
Right.
So to me, we are modifying standards in this ODP. We have base standards and you can, and in the future, someone could come in, the Stevenson's or someone else, and, and pick one or the other. It doesn't have to be what's in this ODP. Is that correct?
That's correct. And staff implements that through the site planning process. And so that, that's how, that's the enforcement mechanism.
Right. So with what you just verified, I don't think this is terribly likely to happen. I don't think it will happen. But if hypothetically, even in just this very development, down the road after this ODP is approved, these guys change their mind and say, you know, we don't want to apply these standards in this ODP that we're talking about tonight and that we're possibly going to amend tonight and that are, I think, a higher and better standard. We're just going to go with the standards that's in the zoning code as it is. Could anything legally stop them from doing that?
So the, so the, so I understand what you're saying. Are they just going to throw the ODP and go with CR standards? That's not the way that's written. These standards actually apply. What they can't do is start mixing and matching between the two.
I understand that, yeah.
So these, these standards, anything in here for landscaping over, kind of trump the CR district standards for landscaping. And so it's not that they're picking and choosing or applying this or the CR. They're applying CR and this. They just can't start picking and choosing between the two and applying the, the standards that most fit the development.
Right. I thought that they couldn't pick and choose the menu items from both.
Right.
But they can pick one in its entirety, or they can pick the other in its entirety.
No, it's, it's the ODP. It's the ODP and then anything that's, that's not here, you know, we default to this. They can't, they can't implement the ODP and then say, oh, we want to change the height requirement because the CR is higher, right?
Right.
So the ODP, if, does, and I'm getting out of here because I'm not the planner specific to this. All right, let me find one to give you an example. Is there height in here, Bria? Oh, here's one. Snow removal, right? So it is specifically called out in the ODP that they're going to provide snow removal areas. That's something that they have to apply, whether, whether they want to or not, because it's tied into the ODP. So then they can't say, well, we want to apply the CR and we're not going to apply the snow removal areas. No, it's called out in the ODP. It's a requirement of any type of site development.
Yeah, I thought, I thought Mr. Buckley's question was something different. Can I?
Go ahead.
Even if you didn't mean something different, you got a different question in my mind, if I might. I thought what you meant to ask is if for some reason Mr. Stevenson decides to sell this property and we have this in place, the new owner could decide on the ODP or the base zone district.
No, the zone, so if they were to require, an easy way to do it is when you do a property transaction, most real estate companies will ask for a zoning verification. The zoning verification letter that's going to come from the city is going to have that slash. So it will say, what is this one, CR slash PD? And then it'll, it'll specifically refer to this document. So this document doesn't go away with a transaction, ownership, anything like that. The, the official development plan is binding on the property.
Okay.
That runs something out.
I feel like, I feel like I still haven't gotten my question across then. It's like, the, the language of the zoning ordinance, to me, seems to say that if someone wants to develop a piece of property that has a PD slash whatever base zone district zoning, you know, there are design standards of, you know, well, yeah, all the design standards, you know, building heights and setbacks and parking and all those sorts of things. And there are standards that are codified in the zoning ordinance, and there are standards that are on this piece of paper in the ODP. And you can't like choose the building height from the ODP and you can't choose the parking requirement from the code. I get that. But like, I've interpreted the language in the zoning ordinance in that section I read to mean that you can pick the entirety of one or the entirety of the other. And so in that case, if you pick the entirety of the design standards in the CR, is, is any of the ODP applicable if, if a developer decided to choose and say, I don't care for this ODP anymore, I just want to pick the standards in the CR? Or am I completely misreading that and misunderstanding this, which is possible?
I, I think you're misreading it, misunderstanding. Can you give me the code citation again?
Certainly. And I'll read it again. Redevelopment, and you got a question. What does redevelopment mean versus development? I don't know if there's a distinction there. Redevelopment within a PD district may apply either the standards of the base zone district or the standards of the ODP. So I'm interpreting that means like, okay, there's two sets of standards. I have base zone district standard right here. I have ODP standard right here. Let me pick one. I can pick this one or I can pick that one. Is that what that means?
Yep. And, okay, I got the provision. So yes, that's exactly what that means. If they wanted to develop under the CR, they could develop under the CR.
Right. And so, and, thank you.
Yep.
I guess follow-up question then for the Stevenson's. You've been very great and gracious tonight about assuring us that you want a high-quality development here. Can you assure us that since the code grants you this option to develop entirely under the base CR district and ignore this document, or to just develop under this document and ignore the requirements of the base zone in the code? Please tell me you're going to pick this.
It's equally, the question equally is applicable for both sides.
Yes, granted, there are two ODP documents.
I'm just trying to understand. Okay. No, I mean, how do I say this? If we had a problem with it, we would have been addressing it earlier. And that's why we're here today. We, we want to develop the way this is because there's certain things we don't want to occur in certain places. And this is one way for us in which to help tie that down. So no, our commitment and our goal is once we get through the process, that then we start the development. And then we go ahead and begin to develop according to what we've got here tonight. And I don't see that changing. There's, there's, it makes, it makes a lot of sense in a lot of different ways. And so no, that's why we're here.
Okay. Thank you.
We just feel that one size doesn't necessarily all the time fit everybody. Just then that, that's kind of what we're trying to do here.
I agree with that sentiment. And yeah, I appreciate what you're trying to do.
But thank you, thank you for, for the question.
I had no other questions, Chair. Thank you.
Any other commissioner questions? Commissioner Kettner.
I think the only thing that hasn't been brought up, that was brought up by a public comment, was parking for employees. Somebody mentioned that there was, has been parking, okay, that there's been parking by employees in the neighborhood. Is there anything about this plan that will help address that?
Well, first, if we'd known about it, we would, go ahead.
Right now, we have ample parking for all of our employees on site. So if someone else is gone somewhere else, I'll give you my number and you call me.
Yeah, they've been doing it for years.
Where?
Right at the end of Isabel.
Do you have a card you can go give?
Right next to Alexis.
Okay.
Maybe you can, yeah. Thank you.
No, it's, and our apologies, we did not know about that, but no, there's, as you can tell, there's more than enough room to park on those parking lots.
Right. And I trust you that now that you know about it.
And somebody's being lazy and doing this, that's a real problem.
Thank you.
Is everyone complete with comments and questions at this point? Okay. So can I call for a motion?
Can we discuss process first?
Sure.
Given the timing, or the time of the evening, can't even say the right words. I guess what really, did I hear staff correctly in saying what, what you're planning to put in front of city council is not what we have in front of us tonight? That it will be changed before it goes in front of city council?
That's correct. And also, well, from my perspective, we are still drafting that development agreement. So several components that have come up tonight with public comment are still being incorporated into the development agreement. So that document doesn't go before you, it only goes before city council, but that will address several things. And then I believe there's going to be changes to the ODP based on tonight.
So how does that work when council is supposed to get a recommendation from us on the ODP, but the ODP they're saying is not the one that we gave them a recommendation on? And what would be the easiest path forward, given that? And given that it would seem there might be some amendments? Is it possible, will the staff have any ideas?
Would you repeat your question? Because I was asking, but I was asking because anticipating your question.
Yeah, you might have been asking about sort of the same thing. So I was just wondering what the easiest path forward would be? Because it seems like it's a little bit difficult if we make a recommendation on one document and it's required for us to do that, but then what city council sees is something different.
Right. Very, very, very good question. Because I was actually going to kind of counteroffer what Lauren had just said. So there's kind of the three pieces. So if there's something specific that you want to change in the ODP, I would recommend that you come up with the language and make that as part of your recommendation and amendment, right? That way it's here and staff is not doing it and then taking something different to council. That's another option. I personally don't like that option. So if you want to change a standard within the official development plan, I would say we do it tonight. The other thing is, the easier, if you're looking for a more simple option, is a development agreement. And so the development agreement, and Lauren can talk a little bit more to this, this was to kind of take the, the case materials and put it into one docket, document so that it was a little clearer and council was going to act on that. So that doesn't affect the planning commission directly. Although, within the development agreement, as I, as I mentioned earlier in the evening, if you're specific, you can include some other items. They're not conditions of approval on a, on a zoning, right? So a development agreement could address paging systems. A development agreement could address, I'm not sure what unless it's a specific number, but some of the standards related to lighting. And so my recommendation, if, if the planning commission wants one from staff, is to use the, these are my notes. I got nine items that were conveyed to the planning commission by Diane Duffy with Daniel Westchester, is that planning commission recommend that the nine items specified, and if you want to add something else, I can read these off, be addressed or reviewed in the final development agreement that's presented to council as an option. That, if you're looking for an easy, that's, that's the easy option. If not, you.
Can I just clarify one thing with that option? So with that option, staff would not be making any changes to the ODP between now and council?
Correct.
And the concerns would only be addressed through the development agreement and the ODP would not be changed?
Correct.
Thank you for the clarification. I don't know how I think about, feel about it. Thank you.
Commissioner Peters?
Thank you. Yeah, and I think this is getting to the questions that I was asking earlier, maybe not so eloquently, but a quick question, I, I feel like I have a preference at this point, but a quick question on the development plan. Like the ODP is filed with the county as well, I believe. Is that correct?
Both documents will be recorded. Both the development agreement, all the ordinances that the city council will consider, as well as the ODP.
So both, both the development agreement and the ODP will, will be recorded and publicly accessible?
Yes. The ODP for sure will. Lauren, I, I believe developer agreements get recorded as well, right? As part of the, as part of the ordinance?
Yeah, it's, it's incorporated as part of the ordinance. So the whole thing.
As part of the ordinance, but it may not be as accessible. And I think, so I think it, I think my preference is that we make an amendment to the ODP tonight with our recommendation because that's the, I think that's the cleanest way and it's, it's accessible and there's a record. And I would like to hear the nine items, but the three that came from my discussion and. and questions related to the buffer zone, the lighting, and then the no audible intercom. And so, I think we need some time to put together, at least I would appreciate some time, I mean, it is a little bit late. I could potentially work with city staff right now on the fly to put together some language and make an amendment, or we could take some time and come back, extend the meeting. I'm certainly open either way, interested to get thoughts from others. But, I guess I would say that those amendments would be a condition of my approval and support for this.
Thank you, Commissioner Peters. Commissioner Buckley?
Thank you. Just to just along the lines of what Commissioner Peters was just saying, can we take a 10- or 15-minute break and draft some language? Is that, like, permissible under open meeting law?
It's absolutely permissible to recess for a few minutes. It's, I would just defer to the Commission and Chair.
Okay. Yeah, I'd be supportive of taking a break for a few minutes to use that time to, like, craft some language. It's going right in the ODP, so it's important that it's thought out. But I don't think it would take, yeah, I'm certainly willing to give it a try, just in, you know, a couple minutes tonight, I think we can handle it.
So, should we take a break until 11 o'clock? It's a 13-minute break.
I can sit down.
You can sit down for 13 minutes. Don't, don't get too comfortable.
Hey, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Redd. I think we're ready at this point to resume the conversation and I'd like to request a motion to move forward with a vote?
I would like to make a motion that the Planning Commission adopt the facts and finding in order as presented in the staff report and recommend that the City Council approve annexation case number AX 21-001.
Second.
Is there any discussion on that? Can we call for a vote?
I apologize. I was not monitoring. I kept coming back and forth and I missed what just was said.
So Commissioner Kettner just read the motion for annexation.
Do we have a second?
And do we have a second?
Yes, Penny.
Stephen, seconds. Is there any discussion by anyone online or anyone present? No discussion. So can we call for a vote?
Commissioner Furman?
Commissioner Furman, you're muted.
You are now unmuted, I believe. Commissioner Grablunas? Commissioner O'Neil? Commissioner Peters? All right, it passes. I'd like to request a motion for the rezoning.
I move that the Planning Commission adopt the findings of fact in order as presented in the staff report and recommend that the City Council approve rezoning case number AX 21-001.
Is there any discussion on that? No discussion. Can we call for a vote?
I apologize. I was not monitoring. I kept coming back and forth and I missed what just was said.
So Commissioner Kettner just read the motion for annexation.
Do we have a second?
And do we have a second?
Yes, Penny.
Stephen, seconds. Commissioner Buckley, seconds. Is there any discussion by anyone online or anyone present? No discussion. So can we call for a vote?
Commissioner Buckley? Commissioner Furman?
Commissioner Furman, you're muted.
You are now unmuted, I believe. Commissioner Grablunas? Commissioner O'Neil? Commissioner Peters? All right, it passes. I'd like to request a motion for the rezoning.
I move that the Planning Commission adopt the findings of fact in order as presented in the staff report and recommend that the City Council approve rezoning case number AX 21-001. This is the east side.
Do we have any discussion? Oh, sorry. Is there a second? Thank you.
Do we have a second?
Yes, Penny.
Stephen, seconds. Commissioner Buckley, seconds. Is there any discussion by anyone online or anyone present? No discussion. So can we call for a vote?
Commissioner Buckley? Commissioner Furman?
Commissioner Furman, you're muted.
You are now unmuted, I believe. You're not here, okay. Commissioner Grablunas? Commissioner O'Neil? Commissioner Peters? All right, it passes. I'd like to request a motion for the rezoning.
I move that the Planning Commission adopt the findings of fact in order as presented in the staff report and recommend that the City Council approve rezoning case number AX 21-001. This is the east side.
Do we have any discussion? Oh, sorry. Is there a second? Thank you.
Do we have a second?
And do we have a second?
Yes, Penny.
Stephen, seconds. Commissioner Buckley, seconds. Is there any discussion by anyone online or anyone present? No discussion. So can we call for a vote?
Commissioner Buckley? Commissioner Furman?
Commissioner Furman, you're muted.
You are now unmuted, I believe. Commissioner Grablunas? Commissioner O'Neil? Commissioner Peters? All right, it passes. I'd like to request a motion for the rezoning.
I move that the Planning Commission adopt the findings of fact in order as presented in the staff report and recommend that the City Council approve rezoning case number AX 21-001. This is the east side.
Do we have any discussion? Oh, sorry. Is there a second?
I think the amendments that we just took a break to craft all properly belong to the east side rezoning. Would that kind of have consensus on that, I think?
Yes, I think that's correct.
Yeah, thank you, that's all then. I think someone else was going to make the motion for the amendments.
Okay, if there's no discussion, I can make a motion for an amendment? I would like to recommend that Planning Commission recommend amending Section 3, Letter F, Section 4, by adding a subsection A. This is in regards to the buffer zone. This is the buffer zone section. In Planning Area 2, the landscape buffer will be a minimum of 175 feet in width along the entirety of Eldridge Street. And add Section B, the landscape buffer will not contain any habitable structures.
Will we do all amendments at once?
No, each one separately.
Okay, is there a second for that? Is there any discussion on that? Yes, Commissioner Buckley?
All right. By way of explanation of how I came up with that, I understood that staff just took a look at the conceptual site plan at our request and that number in there, 175 feet, that is slightly less than the actual distance shown in that conceptual site plan right now between the right-of-way line of Eldridge Street and where the structures in Planning Area Number 1 begins. So the intent is that with this amendment to the ODP, no-hatable structures with that large offset, that covers almost the entirety of Planning Area 2, which the intent statement in the ODP calls for being a buffer space. So the idea is this just puts a little bit extra teeth on that, so it's an easily quantifiable thing that can be held to in the future.
Commissioner Peters?
Yeah, two comments. One, that sounds pretty good, that it's basically that same distance, but slightly less to allow for any deviations in the final design. It seems very reasonable. One of the things that I was thinking that could be under the buffer subsection would be that it included landscaping that would prevent any light pollution from coming to the homes. And I'm interested in knowing if that's possible to request, knowing that, I mean, it does take time for trees to grow, but that that would, you know, be included in that, or how else it's being looked at, being addressed. I know you're looking at other sections, but I think it's relevant to understand now because I was thinking it could potentially be addressed there as a subcategory.
Did you have any proposal?
Does staff want to respond to that? It was my impression that we could not add something like that to this.
I don't know how, what would be proposed for us to say yes?
in the staff report and recommend that the City Council approve rezoning case number This is the east side.
Do we have any discussion?
Second.
Oh, sorry, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion?
Yes, I think the amendments that we just took a break to craft all properly belong to the east side rezoning. Would that kind of have consensus on that, I think?
Yes, I think that's correct.
Okay. Yeah, thank you, that's all then. I think someone else was going to make the motion for the amendments.
Okay, if there's no discussion, I can make a motion for an amendment?
Please.
Okay. I would like to recommend that Planning Commission recommend amending Section 3, letter F, Section 4, by adding a subsection A. This is in regards to the buffer zone, this is the buffer zone section. In Planning Area 2, the landscape buffer will be a minimum of 175 feet in width along the entirety of Eldridge Street. And add Section B, the landscape buffer will not contain any habitable structures.
Will we do all amendments at once?
No, each one separately.
Okay, is there a second for that?
Second.
Can we, is there any discussion on that? Yes, Commissioner Buckley?
All right, by way of explanation of how I came up with that, I understood that staff just took a look at the conceptual site plan at our request and that number in there, 175 feet, that is slightly less than the actual distance shown in that conceptual site plan right now between the right-of-way line of Eldridge Street and where the structures in Planning Area Number 1 begins. So the intent is that with this amendment to the ODP, no-hatable structures with that large offset, that covers almost the entirety of Planning Area 2, which the intent statement in the ODP calls for being a buffer space. So the idea is this just puts a little bit extra teeth on that, so it's an easily quantifiable thing that can be held to in the future.
Commissioner Peters?
Yeah, two comments. One, that sounds pretty good, that it's basically that same distance but slightly less to allow for any deviations in the final design. It seems very reasonable. One of the things that I was thinking that could be under the buffer subsection would be that it included landscaping that would prevent any light pollution from coming to the homes. And I'm interested in knowing if that's possible to request, knowing that, I mean, it does take time for trees to grow, but that that would, you know, be included in that, or how else it's being looked at, being addressed. I know you're looking at other sections, but I think it's relevant to understand now because I was thinking it could potentially be addressed there as a subcategory.
Did you have any propose, oh, sorry.
Does staff want to respond to that? It was my impression that we could not add something like that to this.
I don't know how, what would be proposed for us to say yes, that would eliminate or prevent light pollution by landscaping? I just...
It's not quantifiable. And so if you gave me a number and then gave me a timeframe, we could craft something, but you would have to have a growth rate of a tree, right? So unless you, if you're looking at trees, doing something with light, you have to have the height of the tree and the canopy of the tree, and then that's going to take time. So then you have to factor in how, it's not something that we can actually quantify.
It would be easier to address through lighting standards and fixtures than through, I think, landscaping that changes over time and depends on a species and that type of thing, or with foot candles.
Yeah.
So is it feasible to, you know, given that buffer zone, to require zero light candles at that?
At the property line? At the right? That is something that we could review for and confirm, yes.
Okay, and I guess my question is, is it technically feasible? I mean, thinking about, right, the scope and the cone of that light and knowing how far that distance is, I know maybe you need to make some final calculations and look at it, but just kind of a rule of thumb based on your experience, does that 175 proximate feet, does it, would it account for that zero? Does that sound reasonable?
I think it would. I mean, I think essentially it would mean that a light fixture would have to move far enough away from the property line so that whatever spill it was, you know, was at that zero-foot candle. So that is something that could be addressed through design and through photometric plans that are required as part of a segment.
Okay, so then I'll remove the request and I'm assuming that we'll handle this in another section. Maybe somebody can give me a preview of that, or if I have to wait, but I think that's what I'd like to see on the lighting, is that there's zero-foot candles at the property edge.
And if that's something that the commission wants to entertain, that's something that's quantifiable. So with the amendment that we were doing with the temperature control, whatever that letter was, I would add a letter below it and use similar language for the landscape requirement and say a photometric plan reading of zero-foot candles shall be required along the entirety of the west right-of-way line of Eldridge. Now, when we do that, right, so that'll give you, when they put together a photometric plan and their lighting designers can do this, it doesn't take into account the fact that there's a streetlight, the curling center out there, right? So we are designing for...
Absolutely.
Okay, all right.
This is just in reference to the property line?
Just into the property and the project, yes, exactly.
Right, and the distance from the, whatever the last light is that shielded to the west to over here, that's accomplishable.
Commissioner Furman?
I just had a clarification question. Is this subsection A with the 175-foot buffer in addition to the landscape transition buffers, is that what this is being added to?
I believe so, is that F4?
F4, yeah. Sorry, I missed that, that was what I was trying to clarify. Okay, all right, thanks, that was all.
Okay. Additional amendments?
I think we need a second for this amendment.
Oh, I'm sorry, a second for this amendment.
Second.
Okay.
Can we call for a vote?
Commissioner Buckley?
Yes.
Commissioner Gribbliunis?
Yes.
Commissioner Furman?
Yes.
Commissioner Kettner?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neill?
Yes.
Commissioner Peters?
Yes.
That passes 6-0.
Is there, do we have an additional amendment to this motion?
Yes, well, and you'll need to make another motion.
Yeah, okay, can we make another motion?
Two more, potentially.
I'm trying to combine the two into one.
Yeah, I think we're going to...
Okay, I'll stay tuned.
Then I'd like to make a motion for Section 3, G1E, to add number 3, stating that lighting temperature shall be consistent throughout the site. And adding a number 4 for the photometric plan reading, or for a photometric plan reading of zero-foot candles to be required along the west edge of Eldridge.
Do we have a second?
Second, second.
Is there any additional discussion?
Yes, I have a comment. I greatly appreciate what we're trying to do to have the neighbors not experience unduly harsh and bright lighting in their homes, not have a bunch of light pollution from this. I personally am not a lighting expert, I don't think any of the members of this commission are, and I don't have the confidence that it's necessarily technically feasible to achieve zero-foot candles at the property line. The default requirement in the zoning code, as Ms. Pafford told us earlier tonight, is half a foot candle, which is already a pretty robust standard. So I think this is done with good intention and I definitely do not want to see a bunch of light pollution that the neighbors are exposed to, but I just am afraid that this amendment might make something that's too strict of requirement, that's infeasible to achieve.
If I could ask a question to staff and their experience, if they've worked on projects that have achieved zero-foot candles at property lines during the photometric studies?
You can design a photometric plan that shows zero-foot candles. It is, so what we also learned is that foot candles isn't the best measurement to put together a lighting plan. And so if you were to ask me, I think I would probably defer to Commissioner Buckley's recommendation to use what we have in the code of a half-foot candle that allows a little bit of air. You can do it. What the reading says and what you actually see on site are two kind of different things.
Yes, Commissioner Kettner?
The proposal is for the zero-foot candle only on that western part, which is on the far side of the buffer zone, right? Okay.
Commissioner Peters?
Yeah, first I had a question on the first part of the amendment, the uniform lighting, just wanted to get a little background on that.
The intent was just that the light sources match in color, the light temperature is the same color.
Okay, because...
Throughout the exterior.
My mind, I was thinking, oh, it has to be like foot candle uniform, and they may want to light some areas more than other areas, like for security reasons or whatnot. And so I'm wondering if we want to clarify the uniform in style and color versus foot candles?
It's actually lighting temperature. The light temperature is the color, refers to color.
Okay, the temperature was in the wording?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, and that clarifies it, I appreciate that. And then as far as the zero, I think, you know, again, it's, it makes a cone, right? Any, if it's going to come down, because it can't come up, so it's going to come down, and there's a sphere of that cone. And I think that 175 feet is a pretty long distance, and I think it is reasonable to go with the zero.
Do we have additional comment on this portion of the amendment?
Yeah, I'll just reemphasize, I don't have enough confidence that we know enough about lighting that we can really achieve zero. Zero is a very low number. So I'm not in favor of the second part of this amendment, but the first part of the amendment specifying uniform temperature, i.e. uniform color of the lighting, I do support. So if we vote on it as a package, I'm a no. If we can break it out, I'll be a yes on the first part.
Commissioner Gribbliunis, could I ask that we separate the two into two amendments?
Yeah, I'll strike the item 4.
And I'll withdraw my second.
So can I call for a new motion on that?
Yes. I'll make a motion to amend Section 3, G1E, to add number 3, stating that lighting temperature shall be consistent throughout the site.
Second.
Can I call for a vote on that?
Commissioner Buckley?
Yes.
Commissioner Gribbliunis?
Yes.
Commissioner Furman?
Yes.
Commissioner Kettner?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neill?
Yes.
Commissioner Peters?
Yes.
That passes 6-0.
Okay, thank you. Could I call for another motion regarding the initial rezoning for the east side?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to amend Section 3, G1E, with a number 4, stating that the photometric plan, or a photometric plan reading of zero-foot candles will be required along the west edge of Eldridge.
Second.
Can we call for a vote on that?
Commissioner Buckley?
No.
Commissioner Furman?
Yes.
Commissioner Gribbliunis?
Yes.
Commissioner Kettner?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neill?
Yes.
Commissioner Peters?
Yes.
That passes 5-1.
And last, can we call for a motion for the rezoning of the west side?
Yes, thank you. I move that the Planning Commission adopt the findings of fact in order as presented in the staff, oh, you know what? I take that back, we never voted on the whole package.
I had one more amendment on the intercom.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms., Commissioner Peters? Go ahead.
And I didn't know if this was, unfortunately, I wasn't able to communicate with folks as these were being drafted up, but maybe we can figure it out on the fly, that there would, you know, language, what section it would go into, that, let me find my notes, that related to no intercom, no audible intercoms in the project.
Would you like to draft a motion for that in a section?
Can somebody, could staff suggest a section? I did, I thought I drafted something, but I'm not, I need to find my notes. So amendment to require no audible intercom within the project site?
One moment, Commissioner Peters. Mr. Rice, did you have a comment?
And so I kept looking behind us as we were having some discussions. I think the paging system is more appropriate in the development agreement. There's not a good place in zoning standards because we're not designing to a site feature, right? So I think it's more appropriate, and also I think it needs to be thought out a little more because you have to, and I would defer to Lauren, you can say no external communications paging systems, but there is a requirement for emergency services or security, so there is a kind of, there needs to be an out included with that as well. And so I don't think the zoning document's the appropriate place for it, it's more appropriate, in my opinion, in the development agreement.
Okay.
I have a thought on that. I think if we put something that said zero decibels from regular, you know, normal operations, then that would be inclusive, it would still allow for emergency or alarms or security, but, and it would be a, you know, kind of like the foot candle requirement, the decibel requirement, you know, at the property edge along that west side.
Right, and that's where we'll, so decibels are regulated, they're in the municipal code, not in the zoning ordinance. I think it would be more appropriate in the development agreement than in the zoning standards.
Sounds like it's addressed in the municipal code.
I'm not convinced that this is addressed in the municipal code.
This specific topic is not. Sound and noise is addressed in the municipal code. It's not a zoning standard. Code enforcement, we actually had to buy him a sound meter to go out and enforcement, and it's a municipal code requirement, not a zoning standard.
Yeah, again, I think, you know, there's, I think we need to look at this, because you know, I think there needs to be something here, because any commercial development is, can have any regular, you know, there's, there's regular intercoms and noises and noise levels associated, and, you know, I think that this is, unless there's something either in the ODP or the development agreement, then...
Commissioner Peters, I think that's what, I think that's what Mr. Rice is saying, that it would be in the development agreement, and that the decibels themselves are addressed in municipal code. So there's a decibel standard in municipal code, and then this particular exterior intercom piece would be addressed in the development.
Agreement?
Agreement, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Rice, can you confirm that? Is that correct?
Correct, correct.
Okay.
Counselor found the amplified sound is addressed in 952160 of the municipal code.
Are there decibels levels there, or does it just, I don't, my memory was that there were no decibels specified.
There are no decibels specified. It talks about, there's one subsection that talks about the hours, during certain hours of operation, and then another subsection talks about basically sound amplifying equipment from a motor vehicle, another subsection talks about bells, chimes, any device for the production or reproduction of bells or chimes, but it does incorporate, or it discusses loudspeaker, public address system, or other sound amplifying equipment as well. So it doesn't have specific decibels, we do have a decibel reader, because that helps code enforcement issue summonses if they can actually have a specific reading, but the ordinance is written fairly broadly regarding sound.
Okay. Do we have additional conversation or comment on this piece of it?
I guess I would want, if this is not written into the ODP, which I just would have to look at it again, and it just like, folks went through the exercise over the break to see where, then how would we motion to City Council that it would need to be in the development agreement? Like, how would that requirement, because that would be a requirement of...
I think, I'm going to interrupt you, Commissioner Peters, because I think we have an amendment already and that that can be added into.
Yes, Commissioner Peters, I was going to make a motion about items for the development agreement. I was going to make a motion about items for the development agreement that would follow all these other motions for the ODP. So that was what we discussed.
Okay. I'm going to trust you, my fellow commissioners, and wait for the punchline. All right.
Thank you. So do we need to vote on the... Do we need to create another motion over the initial rezoning for the east side as a full package with all of the amendments attached?
Yes, I think best practice, just so that we don't get lost, is just to basically say, state the additional motion with the proposed amendments that have been included, and then take a vote on that.
Okay.
And I have a question about that, too.
Yes.
I, yeah, well, we were talking during the break. We crafted language for a motion I was going to make about requirements that we would like to see in the development agreement rather than the ODP. Does me making that motion, does that properly belong as an amendment conditional to approving this, or does that properly belongs its own standalone motion?
I would say that belongs to its own standalone motion, simply because the development agreement is separate and apart from what will become the initial zoning, rezoning, and annexation ordinances. So this, there will be a resolution on August 28th for the development agreement, so that should be a standalone motion. It shouldn't be conditioned upon the other three resolutions.
Okay. And of course, our agenda for this evening did not say that I would be making this upcoming motion and that we'd be voting on it, so is that all kosher to do that?
Well, I mean, it's, so the tricky part is that the development agreement is only going to be brought before council. It's not something that the Planning Commission essentially has responsibility or duties to review in the zoning code or in, or under charter. I certainly, you know, I don't think there's necessarily a harm in it. I think what we'll end up doing, what staff will end up doing is that when they create the staff memo for reviewing all of these ordinances and everything and your recommendations, they will include that Planning Commission also wanted the following included in a development agreement. But it's not going to be, you're not making a formal recommendation as to that because it's just not something you guys are reviewing tonight.
And I'm fine with that. You know, we all understand that we recommend things to the city council, and they can agree with our recommendations or not.
Yeah. Commissioner Peters?
And I guess I just wanted to ask if there is any way that the approval of the ODP can be conditioned on the development, the provisions to the development agreement? Is there a motion that could be made that would allow for that?
So no, because the develop, again, the development agreement is just not something that's under your, the commission's purview, but council's going to be looking at both on August 28th. So if they, I guess, you know, in practical, practical application, they're going to see the ODP, they're going to see the development agreement. If they feel like there are conditions or terms that are missing, they can either vote to amend at that time, either document. They can, you know, basically deny and vote the resolution down or vote the development agreement down if it doesn't, you know, read to their satisfaction. So that's really where this can be remedied. The development agreement itself, obviously, you all know that it's coming, you know that we're going to have one, but it's not something that you're making a recommendation on. So I don't know how else.
So we can't make a motion for recommendations to the development agreement tonight?
Here's the thing, you would essentially be making a motion that would have no effect because you're not recommending based on that. But what I'm hearing and what I'm communicating to the commission is that we, staff will include in the staff memo to council what you wanted to see included in that development agreement and some of the points that we've discussed this evening.
And if we can just get that information in the development agreement, we will work with the applicant to do that. So it's almost a direction to staff to consider these, adding, including these things into the development agreement. And then we will work to prepare the final document. That'll go before city council. In this whole conversation, the meetings from this, or the minutes from this meeting all get included as part of city council's packet. So they'll have a lot of this information. Our intent will just be to take something forward that addresses these concerns at, you know, full stop.
So before we vote on this, I'd like to know what the recommendations that the commission had discussed during the break for the development plan are.
Chair, may I?
Yes, Commissioner Buckley.
Commissioner Peters and Commissioner Furman, too, for your benefits since you were not involved in the conversation here. The motion that I'll be making separately will state that the Planning Commission recommends that the city attorney's office crafts language in the development agreement requiring the developer to coordinate with the county, the city, and the neighborhood organization on the design of outdoor audio systems, neighborhood gateway signage, traffic calming, and the street design of 7th Avenue, including sidewalks and bike lanes. So once again, those items are, I'll say them slowly, outdoor audio systems, neighborhood gateway signage, traffic calming within the neighborhood, and the street design of 7th Avenue, including sidewalks and bike lanes.
Is there a way on the outdoor audio system to note that it's, I mean, I think what we heard the applicant and the community say is that they're in agreement with no outdoor audio systems? Is there a way to reflect that in that language?
Is that accurate, that there will be no outdoor audio systems at all, even something for...
Regular, regular.
Yeah, not something in regular...
Aside from emergency. That's what I thought that I heard.
I don't, I don't believe that's within our purview to say anyway because of the emergency aspect of that and because of the municipal code. It's really just us wanting this recommended within the document, and then city council to do with that as they will. So I think it's really just bringing these issues to their attention to make sure that they're fully vetted because we're really kind of outside of our, we're not in our lane right now discussing this, really. That's my understanding. Is that accurate?
Yeah, again, I mean, with the development agreement, we're certainly going to incorporate many things that were suggested tonight from community members, and I think the Stevenson group's amenable to a lot of these, but this is not, yeah, this is not something before the commission, specifically the development agreement.
Is there any further discussion regarding that? Or can we move on from this topic?
Yes, I think we still need to take a vote on the...
Yes, we do.
And we need a motion for...
Yeah, on the zoning for the east side as amended.
Yes.
So I'll move it. I move that the Planning Commission adopt the findings of facts in order as presented in the staff report and as amended by the Planning Commission this evening, and recommend that the city council approve rezoning case number RZ-21-001.
Second.
Can we call for a vote on that?
Commissioner Buckley?
Yes.
Commissioner Furman?
Yes.
Commissioner Gribbly-Unis?
Yes.
Commissioner Kettner?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neil?
Yes.
Commissioner Peters?
Yes.
This passes 6-0.
Okay, thank you. Can we, can I call for a motion for the rezoning of the west side of the development?
Yes, Chair, I move that the Planning Commission adopt the findings of fact in order as presented in the staff report and recommend that the city council approve rezoning 20, case number RZ-22-0002.
Second.
Is there any discussion on this? Can we call for a vote on that?
Commissioner Buckley?
Yes.
Commissioner Furman?
Yes.
Commissioner Gribbly-Unis?
Yes.
Commissioner Kettner?
You said discussion, and I didn't say anything, did I? Yes.
Commissioner O'Neil?
Yes.
Commissioner Peters?
Yes.
This passes 6-0.
Thank you. Would you mind, please, reading the next agenda item?
Oh, before we do that, can I make my other motion?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. I move that the Planning Commission recommend that the city attorney office craft language in the development agreement that requires the developer to coordinate with Jefferson County, the city, and the Daniels-Welchester Neighborhood Organization on the design of outdoor audio systems, neighborhood gateway signage, traffic calming, and the street design of 7th Avenue, including sidewalks and bike lanes.
Second.
Is there any further discussion on that?
Oh, I'm going to make a comment or discussion, and I really meant to do this before the last one. There was a little bit of discussion tonight, and it came up, underlying zoning came up. And I just go back to, and thank you, staff, for your time. We met a few months back about this. And I think the way that we do our ODPs and the underlying zoning cause delay in this project being brought forward to us. And I think that I hope that next time we are looking at rezoning and a lot, that we consider some changes in the underlying zoning so that somebody who wants a limited ODP is not in the position of having to create a whole new zone district because of our rules regarding underlying zone zoning. So I wanted to make that comment before we were done with things tonight, but I definitely support the development agreement.
I'll have a comment to add on to that. Yeah, I guess, you know, the comprehensive plans coming up, I... There's pros and cons to this, but I think I'd be at least open to a discussion about how our planned development districts work generally. The issue I pointed out tonight, in general, I like it because the city of Lakewood has a lot of very, very old ODPs that are generally terrible because of their outdatedness. And so the flexibilities of that site, that passage of zoning code I cited earlier tonight, to just revert to the underlying zoning when something gets outdated is a valuable option, and I think that would hurt the cause of good development in our city if we were to completely move away from that aspect of it. But then it is tricky when we have a new ODP coming up like tonight. You know, I did vote yes on these developments because I take the Stevensons at their word that they are abiding by this ODP because I think their past actions have demonstrated they have a long-term vision for this area and want to approach this project with care and quality. So that's why I voted yes, but yeah, I guess I agree with some of the things Commissioner Kettner said. I'm open to looking at that as an issue later on, especially as we look at zoning changes because of the comp plan. But at the same time, let's beware of going too far. There's a lot of good stuff about how our ODP code is written, and I don't want to screw it up either.
Thank you, Commissioner Buckley.
I know, we confused you. We actually have a motion in a second.
Okay, so can we call for a vote?
Commissioner Buckley?
We conspired to confuse you.
And we're voting on my...
The developing agreement.
Yeah, my, yes.
Commissioner Furman?
Yes.
Commissioner Gribbly-Unis?
Yes.
Commissioner Kettner?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
Commissioner Peters?
Yes.
This passes 6-0.
Thank you, Ms. Redd. Could you read the next agenda item?
Item five, general business.
Do we have general business to discuss?
Next week, we begin discussions, affordable housing, 7:00 PM, and will be virtual or remote, so do not show up here because no one will be here.
Happy birthday to my mom.
Commissioner Peters? Yeah, Commissioner Peters?
Yeah, I just want to note, I'm going to be on a plane coming back from DC during that time. It's, I'll check and I'll try, but it's probably unlikely I'll be able to change it, so most likely I'll be out the next meeting or for a significant portion of it. If I'm able to join for any, I have a layover that I could maybe join for a short period of time.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Commissioner Peters. Any other comments or general business? Then I would like to adjourn this meeting at 12:02 the next day from when we started this meeting. Thank you, everybody.